May I have a ready when you are?
Okay. Please call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Dickinson, Vice Mayor Talamontes, Councilmember Pluckebomb will be with us momentarily, Councilmember Maple,
here.
Pro Tem Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor McCarty.
Here.
We have the quorum.
Yeah, Councilmember Kaplan, do us in the pledge and land acknowledgement?
Please stand if you were able for our land acknowledgement for Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands.
To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Meowak, the Putwin Windtoon Peoples, and the Peoples of Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' histories, contributions, and lives. Please remain standing for the pledge.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Attorney, do you have a report out from closed session?
I do not.
So, may we move to our consent calendar? I have one speaker. Shall we take that now?
Sure.
Thank you. Henry Harry is speaking on item 11. And then if council members have... Oh, I'm so sorry. You have two special presentations, Mayor.
Yes.
Your first is Sacramento Police Department Traffic Unit Resolution, and that's presented by Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing a team within our police department whose work quite literally saves lives. Sacramento is a safer city today because of the incredible work of these men and women of the Traffic Division. They are slowly making their way down. In 2024 alone, their bold data-driven strategy led to a 30% drop in fatal crashes in our city. That means fewer DUI tragedies, fewer pedestrian deaths, and more families making it home safely. This division has raised DUI conviction rates to nearly 90% and earned national recognition from the Mothers Against Drunk Driving and continues to innovate with checkpoints, education, and advanced crash investigations. Captain, Captain Kea Yuki, Yaki?
Very good.
Kea Yuki? Kanayuki, thank you. Lieutenant Connor, their sergeant, detectives, officers, and staff, I want to let you know that you are making a lasting difference in the city of Sacramento, and tonight, we want to stop and say thank you. You are out there late at night, working events, educating our community, and using every tool in your tool chest to keep our streets and our roads safe. On behalf of this city council and our mayor, we are proud to commend your achievements, and even prouder to stand with you as you continue to do this life-saving work. Sacramento is safer because of each one of you and the work you do every single day. So with that, I have a resolution that I will not read based on the comments I just made, but I want you to know that this resolution says three times what I just said. And I am excited to come on down there with you if you have some comments. Now would be the time at the microphone, and then we'll come take a picture together.
Yeah, I'll introduce you to Captain Kanayuki, who oversees the division. We have actually a sizable traffic team. They are small, but they are mighty, and I want to thank the council for allowing us to stand up a nighttime traffic team. We have our nighttime traffic sergeant here with us today, as well as our daytime motor team sergeant. I think what makes this really impressive is not only have they worked very, very hard to improve traffic safety within our city, but remember, this is the team that handles many of our special events, so a lot of our demonstrations, a lot of the special events, the great things that we're doing in the city of Sacramento, this is one of the primary teams that staffs it. And so I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing great work by the men and women of our Traffic Division. With that, I'll turn it over to Captain Kanayuki.
Thank you very much, chief. Just again, thank you to the council for recognizing the Traffic and Motor Team. They do great things every day. I tell you that they are a very dedicated group of people, and we typically, everybody that comes to the units, they typically stay there because they enjoy it. And again, thank you again for the recognition. Really, everything is upon the Traffic and the Motor and the Detective Officers that work every day. So, thanks again.
Thank you. How about a round of applause?
Councilmember Kaplan has a few comments real quick.
Well, as he is walking down, I just want to say on behalf of District One, thank you. I get a request daily for you guys to come up near our schools to make our schools safer. And I will just say, you know, one, Natomas, Robla, Northlake always request you, because last week, you guys came out and you did 50 stops with 32 citations. And I get thank you emails from my community that you were help making the community safer and slowing people down so we don't have any further pedestrian deaths. So, you are appreciated in what you do. Thank you.
And one thing I want to make sure we mention, this team was selected as the Agency of the Year by MAD this year, which is a huge recognition, and want to make sure that they're recognized for that. So, thank you.
Okay, three, two, one. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have National Suicide Prevention Month, presented by Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It is my honor to lead this evening's presentation to recognize September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Since 2008, this month has been officially recognized as a time when mental health prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members unite to recognize individuals, friends, and families impacted by suicide. As I mentioned last year, you know, this is something that has impacted my family on both sides of my parents. Suicidal thoughts like mental health can affect anybody, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. In 2025, the CDC basically said that there was a suicide death once, once every 11 minutes, which is absolutely horrific. It is also one of the top leading causes of death for individuals ages 10 through 64, and second-leading cause of death for ages 10 to 15 and 25 to 34. I am proud to know that our local school districts, recognizing mental health among our teens, have added in mental health advocates and programs to help. It is an honor to welcome Christine Gonzalez, who is the COO of WellSpace Health, who has been providing suicide prevention services in the Sacramento region since 1953, and is the second-largest suicide prevention center in California. They employ more than 70 professional crisis counselors who respond to more than $150,000 calls, texts, chats annually across 30 counties. And in addition to operating 11 local crisis hotlines and the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, it's important to know that they resolve more than 95% of the crises without an in-person response. And that truly is a testament to the training and those that you have on staff and the dedication they do to saving lives every day. WellSpace is not only partnering with the city, but the county first responders to build a comprehensive health crisis continuum, and is a place to call, a person to respond, and a place to go. Christine, while welcoming you up, staff, Dr. Portius sends his regards. He got called away to another meeting, but I'd also like to invite to stand with Christine, Richard Barton, Director of Housing, Romel Antoine, Director of Advocacy and Training, and other members of the LGBT Center to join, as well as the group picture, but to stand behind Christine as she says a couple of words. Come on, Christine.
Yeah, suicide is something that affects all of us in some way, and I'm really proud to be here to represent WellSpace Health and the 988 system in general. 988, as a three-digit phone number, was established nationwide in 2022, but it represents a national suicide prevention and crisis lifeline that's well over 25 years old. And as mentioned, 30 counties in California are represented by the WellSpace Health staff who take those calls daily, those texts and chats daily. And what's happening here in Sacramento is really acting as the blueprint for how to respond to suicidal crises across the state, working here with city police, city fire, Department of Community Response, our local EMS. The things that are happening here in Sacramento are happening right, they're happening well, and they are rippling across the state of California and acting as a blueprint for best response in a public safety manner when it comes to suicidal crises. So, thank you so much for this honor and this recognition, and we'll continue to do the good work in partnership with all folks who serve mental health and first responders. So, thank you.
I just want to, before I have you guys come down, and counsel, I want to have all of you come down, because I think this is really important. For our teens and our youth, I will say especially, I know statistically, our students that identify as ALGBTQ+ community commit suicide at a higher rate, and the work that you guys do day in and day out with having lost a lot of funding truly does save lives. So, thank you so much for all that you do. Counsel, I don't want to bite all of you down.
All right, one, two, three. Got it.
Okay, and one here. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving along to the consent calendar. Do any members have items they would like to speak on? Councilmember Gera?
Item one, Madam Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Item three.
Okay. Anyone else? No. Okay. Clerk, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
I have one speaker on item 11.
Okay, we'll do that, and then we'll do council comments.
Thank you. Henry, Henry Harry?
Thank you, members of the council. The data contained in, I believe it's item 11, and it's a contract, and it's, the data that's in there is informative, and it allows me to better understand how my money is being spent. For example, the firm Fear and Peers seeks an additional $58,000 to complete work in two areas. Task two is data collection and analysis, and task four is listening and engagement. Plus, it shows me that the PR firm AIM is one of its subcontractors. Now, that stands in sharp contrast, because at a recent council meeting, I pointed out to this council that it is spending $127,000 on an investigative contract, and there's no details in the contract. So, I have no idea what my money is being spent on. Are entities getting city money through a dubious process labeled investigative services? In this agenda, it would be nice if the Fear and Peers contract had text explaining the cost difference between task two and task four. Now, this leads me to several requests to improve accountability and transparency. Request number one, now that the city has established a master list of contracts recipients online, can we create a clickable link to view actual contracts the same way I was able to view it tonight in this agenda package? This would eliminate the ridiculous step of needing to file a Freedom of Information request to see the same contract I just saw tonight. And lastly, can the clerk create a portal so that when people submit letters to the clerk, the public can see them? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. First, we have Council, or Mayor Pro Tem Gera.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to thank again Public Works staff for working on the T Street bike corridor. That's a very, you know, popular one, and one of the critical sections is that Stockton Boulevard to 34th Street. That's a pretty gnarly section that really breaks away an entire part of the city. You could take T Street from one end of T Street on the east side of the city all the way down to downtown, but this, there are some critical sections, particularly on Stockton 34th, that need improvement. And that really unifies the city in having an arterial place. So, with that, very thankful for this, and I'll move the consent calendar, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Madam Vice Mayor. I wanted to express thanks to the solid waste staff, the integrated waste management staff, whatever name we're using, to Aaron Treadwell and John Febo in particular, and their staffs for this item to allow us a little more flexibility in applying cameras for the purpose of detecting illegal dumping. Illegal dumping is, I'm sad to say, a scourge in North Sacramento, as it is in some other parts of the city. But I think this contract item before us tonight is indicative of the necessity and the recognition of that necessity to be more effective and more efficient, get more results from the resources we've got. We know we can't, we can't add a lot more people, but we can get smarter and better using technology, and this is, this is, I think, evidence of that. So, I'm very happy to see this and very grateful for the staff for bringing this to us.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Noes? Lisa's yes? So, we have two members absent. Got it, Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. You have Mayor McCarty, and you have Councilmember Pluckebomb absent. Others were all in favor. Wonderful. And next up, we're going to move along to discussion calendar item number 21. Then, we will move on to the public hearing, item number 20, and then go back to the discussion calendar, item number 22. So, first up, we have Shelley Banks. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Shelley Banks Robinson, Senior Human Resources Director. Typically, the report that I'm bringing forward, a report concerning the topics on item 21 would be...
Thank you for turning down the football.
Normally, this report would be presented as a consent item. Because this item includes the unrepresented resolution, and there are significant red line changes in that document, we place it on discussion so you can ask questions that you may have about any changes. Briefly, there are four components to this item. First, the classifications of Fire Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal will move from the SCXYA, our management group of Unit 01, to our unrepresented unit of 20. This move does not change pay or benefits for these classifications. The unrepriso language clarifies both shift command 24-hour schedules and non-shift command eight-hour schedules for these roles, but both roles have the same annual pay on either schedule. Second, the employer-employee relations policy is included because the city updates it when classifications or units are modified, added, or deleted. Third, we are making a targeted compaction correction to the Utilities Operations and Maintenance Superintendent to maintain an appropriate separation from, appropriate salary spread from supervising plant operator. Recruitment has been difficult with only a current 3.2% spread between the classifications. There are eight budget positions affected, and the increase of that change is funded within the Department of Utilities operating budget. Fourth, the adoption of the citywide salary schedule is required for CalPur's transparency and to implement the changes in classifications, the change to the utilities position, and to implement the binding SPOA arbitration award. This is a ministerial action to keep posted rates current for retirement reporting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And Mayor, I have no speakers on item 21.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Maple.
So, I'm moved, so seconded.
You were the motioner.
Was I? I was.
I heard you whisper.
Yes.
Okay, a motion is second.
So, Mayor, I heard a motion by Councilmember Maple and a second by Councilmember Kaplan. Is that accurate?
That's what I heard, yes. Hundred percent. Yes. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Noes or abstentions? Hearing none, one absence. Item passes 8-0.
Thank you. So, we move back to item number 20, which is a public hearing. It is an appeal, Crocker Village Residential Development. And I would like to open the public hearing. Councilmember Kaplan just notified us that she is conflicted and is leaving the room and recusing from this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. First question, do any members have any ex parte communication that they wish to report? Seeing none, staff presentation, please begin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Danny Abbas with the Community Development Department.
Yes, please begin.
This item is a request to develop two distinct vacant parcels within the Curtis Park Village planned unit development with single-unit dwellings, including the 2.49-acre Flex parcel with 31 single-unit dwellings and the 2.37-acre multi-parcel with 30 single-unit dwellings. On May 22nd, this development proposal was heard by the Planning and Design Commission. The commission approved entitlements related to single-unit dwelling development of the Flex parcel and denied entitlements related to single-unit dwelling development on the multi-parcel. The applicant has appealed the decision to city council. The general surroundings of the parcels include single-unit dwellings and the existing Curtis Park neighborhood, affordable senior apartments, commercial development, Sacramento City College, and the City College Light Rail Station. The two subject parcels are the only significantly-sized remaining undeveloped residential parcels within the PUD. The applicant's proposal requires that council approve a tentative subdivision map to subdivide the parcels for single-unit dwellings, a conditional use permit to allow single-unit dwelling development within the shopping center zone, adoption of a resolution amending the Curtis Park Village PUD schematic plan and guidelines to allow single-unit dwellings within the family housing designation, and site plan and design review to construct the proposed single-unit dwellings. The applicant's appeal, which is attachment 11, begins on page 350 of the staff report, contends that denial of single-unit dwelling development on the multi-parcel site violates the Housing Accountability Act and that the general plan designation and zoning permit, and zoning permit the proposed development despite inconsistency with the PUD. A full response to all of the applicant's appeal claims can be found as attachment 12 on PDF page 354 of the staff report. The city's, the city attorney's office has evaluated appellant claims and determined that they are without merit. Both the city's attorney's office and the applicant representation met with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. HCD provided technical assistance to the claim of a Housing Accountability Act violation. Their conclusion, as stated within a letter that is attachment 14 at the end of the staff report, is that the city's denial of the proposed PUD amendment to allow single-unit dwellings within the multi-housing designation is in accordance with state housing law. Regarding appellant claims, that a list of allowed uses within the general plan designation and R4A zoning table supersede PUD land use designations and allowances, both the 2040 general plan and City of Sacramento zoning code contain clear language that internally links and relies upon PUD allowances. Sacramento City Code states that property within a planned unit development may be used only for the uses that are permitted in the underlying zone in which it is located and that are authorized by the schematic plan and development guidelines adopted for the property. The 2040 general plan states that general plan designations are implemented through and subject to applicable laws, including regulations and guidelines more restrictive than the general plan, such as specific plans, zoning districts, overlay zones, special planning districts, planned unit developments, and other provisions of the Sacramento City Code. A more recent letter dated September 5th from applicant representation to city council claims that the PUD itself authorizes proposed court home development on the site designated multi-family housing by the PUD. Section 2.1.3 of the PUD entitled "Multi-Family Housing Area" distinguishes the multi-family housing area as "high-density housing and a transition from less intense court-single-family development," describing the multi-family housing designation as "separate and a distinct transition from court home development in the following way." Quote, "The area along the western property line of Curtis Park Village, south and west of the court-single-family home area, and on the north edge of the commercial area Flex Zone that contains the Affordable Senior Housing Project can best be described as the multi-family high-density housing area in the Curtis Park Village Plan, allowing for the development of apartments and condominium multi-family housing. The high-density housing area acts as a transitional zone between the less intense court-single-family development to the north and east and the Flex Zone commercial area to the south and Curtis Park Village, a site that is clearly intended to transition from court homes reasonably would not be developed with more court homes. In 2016, the Planning and Design Commission approved a PUD amendment to change land designated multi-family housing to the single, to single-family land to permit court home development. There was no claim at this time that the PUD allowed court homes within the multi-family housing designation. Additionally, at this time, the height limit within the multi-family housing designation was increased to 55 feet to allow for a, quote, "higher, quote, a higher-density housing project of up to four stories over podium parking." The Curtis Park Village PUD, adopted by city council in 2010, has always included land designated for market-rate multi-family housing, separate and distinct from the senior affordable housing. The multi-family site was intended to combine with other uses into a, quote, "truly vibrant mixed-use neighborhood." The inclusion of market-rate multi-family housing within the vision statement has not changed since the original adoption of the PUD. Also, within both the original and current goals and objectives of the PUD is to, quote, "provide various housing choices, including single-family and cluster, affordable senior, and market-rate multi-family residences." This clearly distinguishes that both affordable senior housing and market-rate multi-family housing have always been planned. The PUD guidelines denote three predominant types of land use, land use development, commercial, single-family housing, and multi-family housing. The original PUD schematic plan included approximately seven acres dedicated to the multi-family housing designation, excluding land reserve for senior affordable housing. The area in the middle of the plan, outlined in red, shows land dedicated to multi-family housing. In 2016, the council approved a PUD amendment that reduced the acreage of market-rate multi-family housing to the 2.37 acres shown, allowing an increase in the land dedicated to single-unit dwellings. Now, the applicant is proposing to eliminate the remaining multi-family housing designation and complete residential development of the PUD without any market-rate multi-family housing. Staff has received multiple letters from community members and groups, included within the staff report, including letters that support staff's recommendation, letters that support the applicant's proposal, and letters that support denial of single-unit dwelling development on both the Flex and multi-parcels. Staff recommends approval of proposed Flex parcel development and its associated entitlements with 31 single-unit dwellings, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in report attachment four, since it is consistent with the Curtis Park Village PUD and compatible with surrounding commercial and residential development. Staff recommends denial of the proposed PUD schematic plan and guidelines amendment and its associated entitlements, which would remove the high-density multi-family housing designation from the PUD. Staff finds this proposed action inconsistent with the vision, goals, and objectives of the PUD, and that it conflicts with the necessary findings to remove the designation. the PUD, and that it conflicts with the necessary findings to remove the designation. Specifically, it is inconsistent with general plan land use policies that encourage development intensity adjacent to transit and encourage a mix of, mix of housing types to provide options for residents of different income levels. If City Council wants to approve staff recommendation, the council has everything before it necessary to do so, including findings of fact and conditions of approval to make the decision. If the council wants to approve proposed single-unit dwelling development on both parcels as proposed by the applicant, you will need to provide findings of facts and support of single-family development on the multi-parcel and direct staff to return with the findings and conditions of approval. If council wants to deny, uh, single-unit dwelling development on both the Flex and multi-parcels, the commission, uh, the council will need to provide findings for denial of the Flex parcel development and direct staff to return with the findings, finding language for final action. This afternoon, supplemental material was posted online, uh, which was a letter proposing potential junior accessory dwelling units, uh, within the houses. Uh, staff reviewed the concept proposal and determined that a residence with junior ADUs does not constitute a multi-unit dwelling and conveyed this to the applicant. Uh, that concludes the presentation. Uh, the applicant also has a presentation, um, after both staff and the applicant would be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have councilmembers wishing to ask any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Jennings.
None staff.
Okay. Out of staff. None for staff? Okay, thank you. Do we have the appellant presentation ready?
Hi, good evening, Mayor McCarty. Uh, councilmembers, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Daniel Freeman with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler &amp; Mitchell here on behalf of the applicant appellant. I would ask if the lights could stay on. I know the dimming is, get kind of dark, so if we could keep the lights on, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, so, let me get started. So, first, I'd like to just, I appreciate the identification of ex parte, um, meetings, appreciate that. Um, I do also want to note, to the extent councilmembers feel like they've pre-decided this case, that be determined and notified, and we be notified as the appellant as well of that type of predetermination. Our client is entitled to due process and just want to raise that concern, uh, from the start. So, let me talk about what this appeal concerns and what it doesn't concern, because when I've heard staff's presentation on this case, I got to tell you, I can't help but my, my eyes glazed over, and I don't really understand what the issue before you here is today, and so I'm going to try and boil it down. So, first off, let me talk about what it's not about. This is not about the provision of affordable housing. You're going to hear a lot of speakers talking about affordable housing, affordable housing this, affordable housing that. This was a master plan community, there was a lot of affordable housing required as part of this project, the affordable housing was provided, and there has been no dispute about whether affordable housing was provided as part of this greater project. So, there is no affordable housing issue. This also is not about density or the number of units. Neither staff nor anyone, really, has raised the issue that this project is not, does not meet the objective city requirements with respect to the density or number of units allowed, or whether minimum or maximum on the site. This also isn't about the size of the structures, to be frank. No one said this project is too big, and no one said this project is too small with respect to height or with respect to the building shape, size, or massing. This also isn't about deals that have been made with the developer. One of the main reasons the Planning Commission acted to deny housing on the multi-parcel was a position that a deal was made with the developer, and somehow that was formulated into the zoning. That's not how zoning works. This is not a development agreement, this is a zone. There's requirements that are, that are provided in the zoning, whether it's this developer or someone else, the zoning is what's applicable. Finally, it's not about community opposition. The Crocker Village community came out en masse for the planning commission hearing and spoke out in support of this. And, to the extent you've had an opportunity to go out there and see the community and see where these folks live, there's a reason for that. And this is also boiled and ingrained in your own general plan, which is they want a project that is consistent with the character of the community that's there, and the applicant's proposing that. And that's why they love it, they like it, and that's why they were urging the Planning Commission to adopt the amendment. Finally, this isn't about traditional single-family versus multifamily. I think there's going to be a lot of comments about this, there already has been. These are court homes. Well, I think that's important. Well, why? Because in a lot of documentation, including in certain city documents, court homes are considered multifamily. And, if you go to most cities around the state, they'll call court homes, court developments, bungalow courts, cottage courts, these are considered multifamily projects. That's what this is, court homes. So, the issue before you today is simply building form. It is court homes, court homes, and whether or not that meets the, the PUD's definition, which doesn't exist in the PUD, but concept of that it requires multifamily dwellings. Do these court homes, is this multifamily? And if you think court homes are a form of multifamily, then the decision is made for you. And the appeal should be granted. Applicant contends the proposed homes, the court homes are permissible and are consistent with the PUD and the general plan. The Planning Commission determined it is not permissible and refused to permit it. So, I want to, in case you don't have direct experience with court homes, here's an example. Court homes were identified as one of the main types of building forms that the city wanted to promote in its missing middle housing objectives in the general plan. It talked about court homes, this is from the city's own staff report, as a list of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, these are the missing middles, bungalow courts, and court homes are essentially a form of bungalow courts. It's the same style of development where there's a shared courtyard into an entry, the homes don't have their own front yards, they don't have their own backyards, and so it's a court-style development. And, you'll see in articles, these have been called, multi-unit housing, multifamily housing. You can see here are images of the existing court homes, it's a lovely neighborhood. Uh, that's the, uh, the lower picture on the right, that's the walkway inn. You can see they have a shared walkway, they don't have their own front yard. In the city's own presentation materials dealing with consistency with the new general plan and the missing middle, multifamily objectives and guidelines, cottage courts, court homes, multiplex cottage courts, courts, et cetera, et cetera, are all considered a form of multifamily. So, that's issue one in our view, that court homes are allowed. So, what happened at the planning commission? Well, the planning commission denied court homes on the multi-parcel on the grounds that staff finds the proposal to construct single-unit dwellings on the multifamily housing site to be inconsistent with the Curtis Park Village PUD schematic plan and guidelines, City of Sacramento 2040 general plan, land use policies, and the Greater Land Park Community Plan. So, the issue before you today is one of two issues, and this is how I'd like to break it down. First, whether it's consistent or not, an amendment application has been presented to you, meaning the City Council has the power to amend the PUD to allow for these court homes. That's before you today. In the alternative, this is our issue two, the city does not have the authority to deny it under the Housing Accountability Act. And I'm going to explain to you both issues and walk you through why they're relevant today and why it's relevant to your action. So, first off, with respect to the first issue, why you should amend, if necessary, the PUD to allow for this project? Well, first off, a couple points. The land use designation is neighborhood. This type of development is consistent with the neighborhood land use designation. It is also, if you open up the PUD, an allowed use in the zone. So, the zoning for this site is R-4A, and if you open up the PUD, it says court homes are allowed in the R-4APUD zone. If you open up the city's zoning code, it also allows for single-unit dwellings, which essentially are what staff are saying are not permitted here, in the R-4A zone. Now, if you go back to the original general plan, when this PUD was adopted, which is the 2030 general plan, and you opened up the prior land use designation, because the land use designation has changed, it was previously, you can see it there, traditional neighborhood high, which court homes are considered traditional neighborhood high uses, small lot, single-family units were also permitted in the prior general plan when this was previously approved. Also, there have been kind of comments in staff presentations that it's inconsistent with, uh, the general plan or the, the Greater Land Park Community Plan, that's, there's just no evidence to support that. The Greater Land Park Community Plan actually says, this is the type of development the community wanted. It says right there, "Residents expressed interest in seeing a wider variety of housing types in Greater Land Park, particularly smaller homes that can be affordable by design to, and allow younger Sacramentoans to stay in the area." It's exactly what this type of building type is. It does talk about higher density, but it says that it wants it in the Carlton Track neighborhood, not this one. And then finally, with respect to the general plan, it talks about this neighborhood designation, and it says it allows detached and attached. Both are allowed under the general plan. Okay. Again, issue one is why you should permit this. Well, I think if you open up the general plan and look at it more critically than I think it has been presented today, you will see that this is exactly the type of project that the general plan is trying to encourage. Land use policy 6.3 asks the city to promote a variety of housing types. Single-unit homes on small lots, accessory dwelling units, the applicant proposes accessory dwelling units to help resolve staff's concern with respect to these being single units. Alley-facing units, duplexes, again, we offered ADUs, cottage and bungalow courts, and neighborhood-scale multi-unit buildings. This type of development meets almost, and as proposed with the ADUs, meets almost all of those housing types. Neighborhood form, land use policy 6.4 says, "We want neighborhoods that exist to be recognized in developments that are developed around them, to be consistent with the development types." That's exactly what this project does. It's saying, "Look at the context, look at what's being built around it, we can design a project that matches, that fits," while still providing the density. Recognizing established neighborhoods, understanding what those communities want and how new developments can fit into their sense of place. And then finally, broaden, this is land use policy A dot 10, broaden the range of housing types allowed by right within single-unit and duplex dwelling residential zones, and update development standards for missing middle housing types such as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and bungalow courts. So, this is the exact type of housing type that the general plan is pushing for, and we think if, if a more critical view of the general plan with respect to this project was made, I think that information could be presented to you. So, why approve this project? Irrespective of our legal arguments about why we think you can't deny it. It directly advances the objectives of the 2040 general plan. It provides the missing middle housing in a realistic timeframe. I can't underestimate why that's significant. These are homes this developer has experienced at building. If they're approved, they will be constructed, they will be permitted quickly because they know how to plan-check these quickly, and these will be homes delivered to home buyers. There is vigorous support of neighboring residents, it meets all the density and FAR requirements. Applicant has proposed ADUs or junior ADUs to increase the density or intensity if this council so wishes. Happy to have that conversation. It promotes higher-density ownership housing near transit, and to be frank, I don't see any clear benefit in denying the project. There's no benefit, there's no, there's no upside to the denial of the multi-parcel housing. Now, why do we contend there is no authority to deny it? And I'll try and move through those quickly, so in case there's questions about why you should amend it anyways. Well, first, there's going to be three main arguments that I try to get through as quickly as I can for you tonight. First off, there's F9, let's call it that. It's under the Housing Accountability Act Government Code, section 65589.5, F9. What that says is that where there's a conflict with respect to uses, use type, unit type, the conflict must be resolved in favor of the project. The intent of this section was specifically to address situations like this, saying, "You have a developer proposing a housing project that makes sense, that's consistent with one of the zones, you have to allow for it, it should be deemed consistent." The HCD letter made no reference to this, to be clear. I know that was, it was, it was presented to you as if it was a general conclusion about the HAA, did not reference this law. Government Code, section 65589.5J4, I'll refer to as J4, was referenced by HCD, and I'll address that. And it concerns where the zoning is inconsistent with the general plan, that the general plan standards apply, and as I mentioned previously, the general plan allows for attached and detached residential units and uses. Government Code, section 65589.5J1, and F4, I'll refer to as J1, is our view that multifamily as described in the PUD is not an objective standard, and a reasonable person would conclude that this project is consistent with both the zoning and the general plan. So, let me start with F9, which, uh, I highlighted the, the main section. What F9 essentially does is it says, "Hey, local agencies, there are limitations to what you can do with respect to regulating housing developments in your jurisdictions." And it says, "When you're regulating housing, the standards need to be objective, quantifiable, written development standards, conditions, and policies." And then it defines that. As part of its definition, it includes the following rule. "In the event that applicable, objective, quantifiable, written development standards, conditions, and policies are mutually inconsistent, a development shall be deemed consistent with the criteria that permits the density and unit type closest to that of the proposed So, that, in our view, is very significant. That's a direction from the California State Legislature about how to deal with inconsistencies with respect to unit type. This wasn't really addressed by the staff report whatsoever. Now, there's an inconsistency. The R-4A zone allows this. The PUD, according to staff, does not. That's the inconsistency. By operation of F9, the unit type proposed by the project applicant should be permitted and deemed consistent. As I mentioned in the staff report, the full response on F9 was that it merely clarifies the definition of objective, quantifiable, written development standards, which the city definition of multi-unit satisfies. I agree there's a definition in there, but there's also a rule, and that rule was not addressed. As I mentioned, the R-4A zone permits the unit type, and staff contends the PUD does not, that inconsistency needs to be resolved to permit the project unit types. With respect to J4, that, J4 concerns a situation where the zoning is inconsistent with the general plan. And it says, "When the zoning is inconsistent with the general plan, that the project should not be considered inconsistent with the applicable zoning standards, and a rezone is not required." So, in this case, an amendment would not be required. So, the general plan deals with this. The general plan includes a statement about what is or is not zoning inconsistency. And what it says here is, "Zoning is consistent with the general plan if it is compatible with the objectives, policies, general land uses, and programs specified in the plan. Zoning is compatible if, considering all aspects, it will further the objectives and policies of the general plan and not obstruct their attainment. If zoning becomes inconsistent, the city will proceed in accordance with applicable law." So, the staff report's response to this issue is that, well, the use of the site for single-units is inconsistent with the PUD, and therefore, the PUD is consistent with the general plan. Essentially, um, the PUD, let me continue for a second, and I'll come back to that. The PUD is not consistent, and, and the staff report provides zero analysis in support of its conclusion, and this is a similar failure with the HCD letter. So, let me get into this issue. The staff report essentially concludes the following, that because multifamily is allowed in both the zoning and the general plan and in the PUD, that there is consistency across. in both the zoning and the general plan and in the PUD, that there is consistency across. Just want to make sure. Okay, good. Okay. So the project, so let me talk about this consistency. Sorry, I was a little distracted. Where the project zoning is inconsistent, the general plan standards apply. That's essentially what J4 says. Now, here's a critical fact that I think this council needs to understand. The project site's land use designation was changed. It used to be traditional high in the 2030 general plan. In the 2040 general plan, it was turned into neighborhood. There has been no rezoning since this occurred. Now, the position is, there's no inconsistency between the 2040 general plan and the PUD. This is what the staff report suggests to this council. Now, I encourage you to open up the PUD. It references, in the multifamily housing section that was presented, it states the following, "Within this area, multifamily housing types with a traditional neighborhood high land use designation in the City of Sacramento 2030 general plan are allowed." It directly references, when it talks about use types, the 2030 general plan. And then I, I urge you to look up all those code provisions. I circled them, the definite, the term multifamily housing, the code provision 17.180.050, Chapter 17.18. None of those exist anymore. So none of these code provisions actually exist in the Sacramento Municipal Code, but it's all consistent. The traditional neighborhood land use designation no longer exists in the general plan, but it's all consistent. And no analysis provided to show you why it's consistent. Again, the staff position is, well, there's, there's nothing in the 2040 general plan permitting every type of residential development in all areas designated as N neighborhood. Instead, it expressly mandates that all development comply with the applicable zoning requirements. The idea is that it's almost circular, that what's, what's allowed in the zoning is, or what's disallowed in the zoning is also disallowed in the general plan. And that's how the term, the definition of the term allowable uses is, is used in the general plan, or is suggested it should be used. And that if it's disallowed in the zoning, by operation of this definition of the term allowable uses, it's also disallowed in the general plan. This does not prove consistency. This does not prove that it's consistent with the applicable objectives of, and policies and goals of the actual general plan. Finally, I want to address J1F4, whether or not this is an objective standard. So J1 basically says, "An objective standard, when a project complies with all the objective standards, the city must adopt it unless it can make certain findings." So the question becomes, well, and which were not made by the, by the planning commission, to be clear. So those findings, the health and safety findings, were not made by the planning commission. And we're saying they need to be made. And so the question becomes, is multifamily housing an objective standard? And then F4 concerns the issue of whether or not a reasonable person could conclude that the project is consistent, compliant, and in conformity. So we contend multifamily housing is not an objective standard. Staff report's response is, "The appellant has always been aware of the requirement to develop the site consistently with that designation, and by that designation, they mean by applying the term multi-unit dwelling, which does not exist, exist once in the PUD." Then it says, "In 2010, the City Planning and Development Code had an express definition for such multifamily development." So there was a different definition in 2010, when this PUD was adopted, than this term multi-unit dwelling, which they're now trying to apply. But they say, "In 2013, the city amended the code, they created this term multi-unit dwelling instead of multifamily, that it didn't change the PUD requirements." And then the, the kicker was, they said, "In 2016, there was a PUD amendment." And the argument is that, well, when that amendment happened, the applicant knew the code had changed, and now multifamily presumably meant multi-unit. The question I have is, well, why, when they amended the PUD, did, did we not put the term multi-unit dwelling if this was now the term? If, in fact, multifamily was always intended to mean multi-unit dwelling, then it should have been amended in 2016. There's no reason why it couldn't have been. They cite to the 2016 amendment, you could see it, they did track changes on the PUD. Could have made that amendment, but they didn't. So if anything, the amendment only proves that the applicant was not aware, nor did the city understand that the term multifamily housing was intended to also mean the same thing as the term multi-unit dwelling. So in conclusion on this one, appellant was not aware that the term multifamily is the same as the term multi-unit dwelling, nor is there any guidance, document, or any evidence whatsoever that these terms were ever intended to mean the same thing. Multifamily residential housing, the actual term used in the PUD, has not been defined, nor was a definition provided to you. In 2010, multifamily dwellings meant one unit with three families in one unit. It did not mean three attached units, which is being proposed today by staff. And the concept of, you should have known, the applicant should have known, multifamily residential housing is the same as the defined term in a completely different document, multi-unit dwelling, just doesn't hold muster, it's not an objective standard. Okay. Finally, with respect to a reasonable person's perspective, this is the, the F1 reasonable person standard. So court homes, that's what we're talking about. Court homes are considered a form of traditional neighborhood high land use. If you open up the 2030 land use designation, that's what you'll find. Small lot, single-unit homes are considered a higher-density, traditional neighborhood high land use. That's what it says in the PUD. Look up the traditional neighborhood high land uses and use those uses. Court homes are allowed in the R-4 dash, R-4A PUD zone. That's also what the PUD states. There you see, I included the traditional high-density land use designation from the 2030 general plan, which is referenced in the PUD, allows small lot, single-family dwellings. And you'll see, in the R-4A zone, single-unit dwellings are permitted. In conclusion, the city council, we beg you, grant the appeal. This is about providing housing on a fast timeline that is accessible to this community, that fits within the character of the community, that is being demanded by the community, and which can provide housing quickly at the densities and intensities already contemplated in the PUD and the zoning. This is not about affordable housing, like I mentioned. This is not about a project that doesn't meet density, or intensity, or number of unit requirements. This is not about a deal that was made with the project applicant in 2016 or in 2010. It's also is not about community opposition, this community supports it, they were out here in the dozens. Finally, this isn't about traditional single-family versus multifamily. I think this council, when it passed this missing-middle ordinance, understood that small lots, court homes, bungalow courts, that these are unique housing types that fill an important role in this city and in this community. And so these are things to be encouraged, not discouraged. And that's what the 2040 general plan is all about. And ultimately, that's the only issue here, right? That's the only issue, is whether to allow units that have this particular type of building In our perspective, and on the appellant's perspective, this building form is permitted. But even if it isn't, we believe the city council should approve it. It advances the 2040 general plan's missing-middle goals, policies, and objectives, and is a project that can provide housing quickly and on a very fast timeline. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We have council members punched up to ask questions of the appellant. Mr. Dickinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had, I just had a couple short questions for you, based upon the statement of your appeal as you presented it. Issue one, the amendment to the PUD has been requested, and the city council has the power to approve it. Do you acknowledge in stating that the council has the power to approve it, also has the discretion to not approve it?
Well, as I mentioned, we believe that the council does not have the authority to deny it on the basis of the Housing Accountability Act.
Aside from your contention, we'll get to that, on the Housing Accountability Act, would otherwise, is your statement inherent in it that the council has the power or the discretion not to approve it?
Like I mentioned, the council could deny it. It would have to make certain findings required under the Housing Accountability Act to just, to justify that denial. But yes, in theory, the council could deny it if it met those findings. That's our position, yes.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then, secondly, with respect to issue two and the alternative, the city does not have the authority to deny it under the Housing Accountability Act, then is it fair to say you disagree with the conclusion of the California Department of Housing and Community Development, who are charged with the expertise of knowing California development and community, community development, housing law?
Well, so, two points on that. First off...
I think that's a yes or no question.
I love HCD. I think it's a great entity, and I think they make, they do a lot of great work.
I'm just asking, do you disagree with their conclusion that...
Well, it's a leading question. HCD was only addressed one of the multiple issues that I raised. So with respect to the one issue, we can agree to disagree, but it made no effort or statement or any commentary whatsoever on F9, or J1, and F4. So the only issue that was addressed by the HCD letter was with respect to, was with respect to J4. And I, as much as I do have the utmost respect for HCD, they, I believe they got it wrong.
Okay. So I take that as a yes. You disagree with...
I do disagree, and happy to back it up.
Thanks. That's, that's the questions I had. Thanks.
Okay. Further questions for the appellant? Seeing none, we'll now go to public comments.
I'd just like to make one more thing. Our client has offered to propose ADUs into this project. To the extent the, the council would like to move the project forward, it can be conditioned so that ADUs would be included into the actual court homes, which would get closer to a multi-unit dwelling, but in theory would not accomplish three attached units. So I do want to put that out there, we have made that offer, and we think it's a great way to add density and accomplish the city's goals.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Public comment?
Mayor, I have seven speakers. Michael Turgeon, Rob Weiner, Kathleen Ave, Nancy McKeever, then Allison Colwell.
Hey there, good evening. Michael Turgeon here, on behalf of Housed Sacramento, a local grassroots organization of reasonable people for housing affordability and opportunity in Sacramento. We want to emphasize that we think more units, i.e. a higher-density housing-type project is the right choice for both parcels, and we're skeptical of claims that something denser wouldn't pencil out on this site. If that's true, we have much bigger problems to fix. We can't be turning back the clock and building even more McMansions with two-car garages in neighborhoods where we desperately need density and walkability to address the housing and climate crisis. This is a prime location with likely high demand from students or young professionals that would realistically use the bike bridge or take the light rail downtown. And noting that the proposed addition of junior ADUs is a step in the right direction, but if you look at the plans, we are skeptical that these would actually be offered as independent rental units versus, say, home offices or guest spaces. And to that end, we don't really see that as a major improvement, so we urge council to stand behind the general plan and uphold the vision for a more dense, diverse, and sustainable Crocker Village. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rob Weiner. Following Rob is Kathleen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Rob Weiner. I've been a resident of Curtis Park for thirty-five, excuse me, twenty-five years, no, thirty-five years. And also, I walk by Crocker Village frequently, and those courtyard homes sure look like single-family attached homes to me. None of that meets the conventional definition of multifamily housing or multi-unit housing. Also, I've been involved in the affordable housing field for about forty-five years, and this sort of lawyerly argument about the difference between multi-unit and multifamily, I've never encountered that in all of my years of being involved in the affordable housing field. Moreover, I find the developers' objections as fear-mongering really objectionable. He has raised the issue that he's, if he doesn't get his way, he's going to build a six-story multifamily rental housing for low-income folks, affordable housing, and that because of the Housing Accountability Act, he has carte blanche to build whatever he wants, whenever he wants, with no public input at all. That is a complete perversion of the Housing Accountability Act and SB 330, which are primarily intended to facilitate and expedite the production of housing, rental housing for low and modern-income families. That's what we need in Curtis Park and in Crocker Village, not more of these bogus multifamily or multi-unit housing projects that he's proposing. So I strongly support the staff report and strongly oppose the appellant's arguments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kathleen, then Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I, I had, just have to say that I find it very annoying to listen to my city council being gaslit with the idea that we cannot tell the difference between single-family housing and multifamily housing, just for the record. I wanted to draw your attention to the nineteen-twenty, or sorry, 2022 American River Basin study that the City of Sacramento was a partner and participated in. That report by the Bureau of Reclamation documented the impacts of climate change on the watershed and suggested adaptation strategies to address them. Development density was a critical assumption in that report and the modeling because of the impact it has on hydrology, on water use and quality, and flood protection and response for our communities. I, I just highlight this because this decision is far-reaching impacts, well beyond the feelings of immediate neighbors, including myself. And we, as a country, are obviously in a crisis. The authors of that report have probably been fired, the resources that they used to create it have been dismantled or hidden. And equally brutal are private developers and local governments who acquiesce to profit-making demands that sacrifice the good and well-intentioned and carefully-constructed housing and climate policies that you have created. So that's what you're being asked to do, and I really plead that you do not do that. There should be high-density housing on both of the parcels, not just the multifamily parcel, but the flex parcel. In 2022, when the residential, when flex was allowed to be residential, permitted residential uses within that zone included multi-unit dwellings, dormitories, and residential facilities. That's it. So the flex zone also needs to be high-density housing. Sacramento needs it wherever it can get it, especially here.
Thank you for your comments. Nancy McKeever, then Allison Colwell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name's Nancy McKeever. I live in Curtis Park, have lived there for about, I don't know, twenty-three years, something like that. And I just completely changed my comments based on what I heard from the appellant. He said there's no benefit in denying their request, and the benefit is exactly that. Many, many more people could live close to transit with all of the amenities that that neighborhood offers. And I listed them, there's quite a few, I listed them in my comments to you. I hope, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, you'll look at them. So many more people could live there as opposed to the cottage homes. And each of those many, many people could live at a much lower cost than they could if they lived in a cottage home. And the cottage homes itself are starting over $700,000 apiece. Why is it cheaper? You know, you, I think you know this, but it's the size and the shared infrastructure that comes with multifamily construction as opposed to single-family homes. And another benefit, the plan was adopted years and years ago with seven acres of multifamily. Now it's less than five. And the PUD goal was to get the benefits of the public investment, the transit, the college, the head... college, the head bridge, all those things that were public investments, plus the parks that are in Curtis Park, all those things, the college that has a theater and classes. And so, more people could have those benefits when you stick to the multifamily development. Sacramento, everybody knows, is in a housing crisis. In some of my comments, I submitted data from SECOC that showed that less than 1% of the remaining undeveloped parcels are within a quarter mile of transit. And that very likely could be those two Curtis Park parcels. I don't know for sure, but, so, there's not much left.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. I have three more speakers. The next is Allison Colwell, then Rachel Iskow.
I moved to Curtis Park six years ago with my husband. We were, we aged out of mountain homesteading, and we bought our house from a woman who was aging out of maintaining a 100-year-old two-floor house. She moved to a one-story house that's newer in the neighborhood. Both of us are what you might find it convenient to come to refer to as the ABP, which is the aging boomer population. There's a lot of us in Sacramento now, and in Curtis Park especially, who love the neighborhood. We're aging out of our difficult-to-maintain homes, but we don't want to leave. So, I'm looking at the Crocker Village over the past few years, and you've got a grocery store, a gym, and a senior center or senior living, and I think, oh, great, that's me in 20 years. But I'm thinking, wow, that senior living center is really small. Do I need to get on the wait list now? So, I'm really hoping that the last two lots that are to be developed will be in the form of multi-unit apartment buildings with small, single-floor units with an elevator so when I can't go up and downstairs, I can still stay in the area. I'd like to see all Sacramento neighborhoods have some land set aside for apartment buildings that have accessibility for people who can't go up and downstairs or maintain yards. And so, the Crocker Village has a lot of homes, and some of them are dense, but they all have a lot of stairs. So, this is why I oppose any form-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rachel, and then Varun Arora.
I'm Rachel Iskow, and I'm representing tonight the Sacramento Housing Alliance. I refer you to that alliance's letter in your package laying out the arguments against downzoning this transit-oriented site. Any downzoning would be in opposition to the city's housing element, the general plan, the city's pro-housing designation, and fair housing law. I personally live three blocks from the site and welcome housing diversity in the form of multifamily housing. In my neighborhood, there is pent-up demand for apartments from people who wish to live in our neighborhood and simply cannot afford to purchase a $700,000 home. As important, the Housing Alliance opposes the Planning Commission's earlier action granting a single-family use permit for the remaining flex parcel. There was no justification for granting this use permit. It was clear that the commission felt pressured to approve it. But we know that any decrease in housing, decrease in opportunities for multifamily housing will exacerbate the city's existing housing crisis and close off housing options for renters and non-wealthy households. To prevent these types of actions and loss of multifamily housing opportunities in the future, I urge the council, as you overhaul the city's zoning code, that you remove single-family housing as a conditional use on these flex sites so that in the future, if a developer wants to build single-family housing in these flex zones, they would need to come to city council with a full rezone application. If our goal is to diversify housing types in Sacramento to reflect the diversity of housing needs of the city's residents, our zoning code and processes must give the commission and the council the tools to enforce that vision. Thank you.
Varun Arora is our final speaker on this item.
I'm also getting rid of my pre-planned comments in light of the comments by the lawyer. A couple of years ago, my girlfriend taught me the concept of a shit sandwich. Do you know what a shit sandwich is? Sort of with the bread, throw the shit inside and the bread below that. And so, the bread here is, congratulations to Mr. Petrovich on building amazing housing for so many people, giving them their first homes, shopping centers, public space, clean and contaminated space. Now, the shit. The appellant has made a mockery of the words, the linguistics around the words multifamily and multi-unit. He's made a joke of it, and they've drowned you in legal gibberish. It's difficult for any leader, any person working in politics, any person working in council, to make progressive decisions in the future if there are 20 other documents that need to constantly be referenced and compared with so that the linguistics are absolutely perfect. This is not magical software code that all connects with each other. This is language. And so, this is appalling. And I guess if this is the way things are going to be, then why are we even asking for multifamily and multi-unit housing in Sacramento? Everything should just be single-family housing, right? The same argument can be made anywhere. So, what you say today, what you do today, will have a precedence in the future. Back to the bread at the end of the shit. The appellant's client's father was a hard-working man from Croatia and Sicily, and they came to the country. And he constantly says that his father made $20,000 in salary. That would be $60,000 equivalent today. He has shat all over the idea of affordable housing and the menace it is, but his own father would not be able to give him birth and raise a family and make him a successful developer if all we had was single-family houses that cost a million dollars. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Is there an applicant rebuttal at this time?
Thank you so much, members of the council, Mayor McCarty. I appreciate your time this evening and for your consideration. I'll just make a few quick comments and rebuttal. Again, it's not about more units or less. There has been no argument by staff that this is not consistent with the density minimums and maximums required by the code. The concept that deny this housing because you'll get another project in the future, well, I don't see that being any different than just denying housing because we want to find a reason to deny housing. That's precisely what the California Legislature is trying to avoid. With respect to the dismissiveness of the ADUs, my client is an experienced builder, and to the extent, I hope some of you have seen the products in the community, some of these products include separate entrances and exits for ADUs, especially you can see them in the brownstone-style developments. He can design, and he can propose projects that clearly have multiple units, two units, in a single dwelling and which will be effective at providing additional housing opportunities. Third, with respect to this concept that we should, again, deny the project because there's going to be an affordable project, this is being given to you by folks who are not experienced builders. Well, it's relevant, right? Part of the problem is that people are saying, don't allow this because we want that. But if that is not financially feasible, that's irrelevant to your consideration. The whole reason for this amendment is because a project was designed that makes financial sense. The multifamily projects, they don't pencil. My client knows what he's doing. I mean, he knows how to track what rental income would be versus the number of units they can provide. If he thought he could make money and actually profit to the extent that would pay for the project, he would have considered it. He would, he did consider it. So, the question is not, well, let's have the dream project that the government builds for us because that would be nice. The question is, well, what pencils? What makes sense? What works? And I think ultimately, that's the issue. Again, this isn't about the number of units. This isn't about prior deals. This isn't about the developer. And I raise an objection to the prior speakers raising my client's father. It's totally inappropriate. The issue here is about building form, whether, because these unit types are not presented to you with three units attached, that that's a justification to deny it. That alone is a justification to say, well, because these three units don't touch each other, none of the objectives and the policies and the goals of the general plan make any relevance to this application. It obviously does. And the concept of, oh, well, don't piece, we're playing word games with you. Well, words matter when it comes to legal requirements. I'm not the one who wrote the municipal code that defined terms, that has a whole section of defined terminology that was vetted, reviewed, made consistent with the general plan, and then adopted. So, there's a reason why words have meaning, and there's a reason why certain words are used and others are not. Finally, with respect to this concept of, I don't see any reason not to approve this The applicant has proposed ADUs. We are talking about density much higher than almost any other single-family court home community anywhere in the city. We are talking about high-density housing. To the extent this body is not prepared to make a decision today, it could ask the applicant to make a proposal at a further hearing about what that might look like, what a project integrating ADUs might look like, and we can bring that to you. The idea that there's a, that the reason to deny it, the speaker said, the reason to deny it is because there's a whole bunch of other ways we could use this land. Well, that's a reason to deny everything. Any land could be used for a million different purposes. In theory, if you have different laws and different, if you have free money and... So, I would encourage the commission, I mean, the council, my apologies, to boil this down in the following way, and this is how I'll conclude. If you look at the applicant's proposal and the requirements, is the building form itself a reason to deny it under the general plan? Is the fact that the three of the units don't touch, is that why it doesn't meet the objectives and the goals and the policies of the general plan? Because that's really the only issue before you. Our view is it's irrelevant. It's providing the density allowed on the general plan, it's providing the intensity allowed on the general plan, providing the housing types allowed on the general plan. And so, when we talk about how words are being manipulated and used, it's being manipulated to encourage you to deny housing, and that's where we take an objection. So, we're happy to answer any questions you have. We encourage you to approve this project, grant the appeal. To the extent you would like to have something presented to you with respect to the ADU proposal, something further presented to you with respect to the ADU proposal, we would be open to that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for the applicant rebuttal?
So, Mayor, can I let you know the public comment period has closed?
Correct. I mean, council member comments. No public comment period has closed. We'll now move to council discussion.
Councilmember Jennings?
So, I've had the opportunity to review the staff report, and I first want to thank all those who came out tonight and making their testimony. But I've had the opportunity to review the staff report prior to tonight's meeting. I've had the opportunity to listen to the testimony of the staff and the public, and I'd like to make a motion in support of staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Comments? Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much, Mayor. One, a couple of things here. In my time, I think 23 years working in the legislature and advising legislative staff and other senators and assembly members on housing, I've never once heard this discretion, this discrepancy between multifamily housing and multi-units. And clearly, a reasonable person would understand, and I'm not an attorney, but in my experience, a reasonable person would understand what multifamily unit is. Second, also, in my time as a planning commissioner for the county and then the time here, I also have never once seen that. And I was very moved by the testimony of, you know, Mr. Weiner, who I've known has worked in the multifamily housing world for many years as well, and also Ms. Iskow as well, and who have actually penciled out projects in very difficult areas. So, you know, the last piece that I'll say that in my time on the county planning commission was that it's an important decision for the land use authority to think about when they make a decision to approve a project or deny a project. And some may say that a project will, by not doing anything, the project will be vacant and nothing will come. But also, on the flip side, I think a hastily-done decision, when, as Mark Twain said, you know, buy land, they're not making any more of it. Once we make a decision on the use of this land, it stays in that form, in that perpetuity for many years. And I will just reflect on the experience on Stockton Boulevard. When we made a decision on this council to be thoughtful about that decision, it spurred the opportunity for new options to come forward. I will be supporting the motion. I do also, though, regret that we're not looking at higher density and that the other portions of the parcels are not in that. And I'll be supporting the motion because, you know, it's inconsistent, the application is inconsistent with the general plan, particularly when you look at that location there, the location that is next to light rail, next to, as you heard, walkability. All of those keys, all of those factors are what we use to determine our land use decisions. And so, you know, this was a new argument that I've never heard before, but one that I don't find credibility to, and that a reasonable person would know what multifamily housing is. And with that, I'll be supporting your motion, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just establish that I've read the staff reports and the material submitted by all parties, including council, listened to the public testimony. And in conclusion, without a great deal of explication, in conclusion, I am struck by council's concession that as to his contention over issue one, the council has the discretion to deny the request and the appeal. That, to me, infers that, in fact, the staff has appropriately identified the issues that should apply in consideration of this appeal, and the applicant has not, in my judgment, made a compelling case for concluding to the contrary on that issue. On issue two, the applicant's contention is that HCD is mistaken to the extent that it has expressed its opinion- it has expressed its opinion in writing to us, and that has been incomplete in its consideration of this. I would note in the letter that HCD says, "The project is not eligible for the protections provided by Government Code Section 65589.5 Subdivision J1, and the city is not required to make written findings under this section to deny the project." That's, I think, particularly meaningful in this context. So in this instance, I find that relying on the expert opinion of the agency at the state charged with implementation in effect of the Housing Accountability Act has concluded that it doesn't apply here. And for those who have watched HCD in the last few years, that's not the common conclusion that it comes to. I find that to be meaningful as well. I will only add that I'm going to support the motion, although I think it's unfortunate that, in a sense, we're splitting the baby on this with regard to the flex parcel as well. I wish they were both being and would be designated for and developed in a higher-density and multifamily configuration. And I'm disappointed in the applicant because I have worked with this applicant in the past. I know what this applicant can do when he is committed to an outcome that serves both a worthwhile development interest and a community interest. And so it's discouraging to see this contention here when I know he's capable of much more. But as I said a moment ago, in consideration of all the factors here, I will support the motion that's on the floor.
Okay. Thank you. No further comment. Madam Clerk, do you want to repeat the motion we have before us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Councilmember Jennings closed the public hearing and made the motion to approve the staff recommendation. That was seconded by Vice Mayor Calamontes, and Councilmember Kaplan is recused from this item.
Okay. With a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? None. Eight zero with one recusal. Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor, we already dispensed with item 21, so we'll move to item 22. That item is an agreement, gunfire detection system.
I think the rest of the team's coming here in a minute. I am not going to take that long, just so we can get that out. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Deputy Chief Zach Bales. With me is Captain Ethan Hansen, and we are here tonight to discuss the Sound Thinking Shot Spotter System as the contract is up for renewal, and then we will be available for any questions. I'm going to turn this over to Captain Hanson in a moment for an overview of the system, and then I'll be back up with a few closing comments and to take any questions. But before I turn it over, I wanted to be clear that the police department strongly supports the renewal of this contract. The use of this technology accomplishes many department goals that are in line with our violent crime reduction strategy, including leveraging technology to the most efficient use of officer time, precision evidence-based response in the moment gunshots are being fired in our neighborhoods, and preservation of life even when we don't get a call from the community reporting shots being fired. With that, I'm going to ask Captain Hanson to come up and give a brief overview of the system to you.
Good evening. Ethan Hansen of Sacramento Police Department. I'm captain of our investigations division. So as Chief Bales talked about, I'll just give a very quick overview. Shot Spotter is a product owned by the company of Sound Thinking. So when you look at the contract, Sound Thinking and Shot Spotter may be used interchangeably tonight, but Shot Spotter is the actual product. Sound Thinking is the company. The Sacramento Police Department first incorporated Shot Spotter in 2015 in a three-square-mile polygon in our north area. In 2016, we added a three-square-mile polygon in the south area, and 2017, a 1.7-square-mile area in our east area of Sacramento. And the way the system works is within those zones, there's a multitude of microphones that when two or more microphones pick up a noise that sounds like a gunshot, that activation or detection is sent to Shot Spotter headquarters. At that point in time, staff for Shot Spotter review the audio to determine if it is a gunshot or something else. If they determine that it is a gunshot, it is sent back to the police department as a published detection, and it goes to our communication center. At the same time, any officer who's logged into the Shot Spotter app will get an alert that will give a precise location as well as the audio from the file. So that all happens within 60 seconds on average of the sound being heard by the system. That allows the officers to quickly identify where it's going, sometimes even before the call for service is entered into our dispatch CAD system, and they could start driving to that location and responding. And when we get there, we engage in our preliminary investigation. Of course, the first thing we look for is any victims that need medical treatment or services, but then after that, we will work to determine if a crime occurred. Because a Shot Spotter detection in and of itself does not constitute that a crime occurred nor develop probable cause for any sort of arrest of a person. So when they get there, after determining any victims that need care, they look for witnesses or evidence to include surveillance, any casings, or any other thing that can prove or disprove whether or not a crime occurred. So now, understanding how the system works on a very high level without going to nitty-gritty details, we'll talk about the cost of it and the value we see in it right now. So the contract we're looking to renew right now costs approximately $530,000 a year, and we are looking at a five-year extension with an out clause for each year. And the reason we asked for five years is to lock in the price so we don't have unfunded liabilities in the future. That is a 4% higher cost per year than what we've been paying for the last four years, which was $509,600. That is paid for through blended funding using a MyOp and federal JAG funds to cover the cost. Now, the value we get out of the system is about four different things that are specific that we're going to highlight right now. The first thing is the system allows us to vet gunshots versus other noises. So as I mentioned earlier, the microphones will pick up that noise and send it to their headquarters for review. As an example, in July, there were about 3,900 detections that were detected by the microphones and sent to headquarters. Yet, only 55 were determined to actually be gunshots when it had human review. So that means the police department was only sent 55 of those publications as opposed to chasing around sounds of shot fire that are inaccurate or misplaced information. And so it helps more efficiently deploy our resources and make sure that we're not going after things that are not gunshots.
Quick question. Who reviews those gunshots?
The Shot Spotter staff. So police department staff, city staff, no one from the police department is involved in that at all until it comes back to us as a published thing. So 3,850 detections, the city had nothing to do with in the month of July, so that saves time. Other systems don't have that human element to review the sounds once they're detected by AI, and so that could lead to additional work if it's not vetted. The second thing that's important about it is we actually get alerts because, on average, we see that less than 20% of the activations in our Shot Spotter zones have correlated community call-in, which means 80% of the time, there is a shooting in those zones, and no one from the community is able to call us or willing to call us. We are still able to go to those communities and serve them and provide them the justice as well as any victim resources they need without the community ever having to reach out. With those alerts that we didn't have the community callers with, or even if a citizen calls in, the Shot Spotter system gives us a precise location. So anyone who's actually heard a gunshot occur outside, you may recognize it's a gunshot. You may give a general idea of where it came from, but you're usually not able to identify the street it's on, and definitely not down to the 100 block or the exact location. So when that activation comes back to us, the officers within a minute are able to get a longitude and latitude and start driving there to identify any victims who need help as well as any suspects who may still be in the area endangering the community. And the last thing, as I mentioned earlier, they can listen to those audio files while they're responding. That means while they're going there, they can listen to hear, is it one gunshot? Is it multiple gunshots? Is it full auto fire? Is it two different types of guns based off the audio? And that way, they can make a safer approach, and they could do a better job at trying to identify any victims that may be on scene as well as any evidence that they need to utilize to further their investigation. Now, with that being said, I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Bales.
All right. Just to illustrate how we use Shot Spotter, I wanted to share a recent example with you. In a moment, I'm going to show you a video, but I want to describe what you're going to see first. Up on the screen, you're going to see footage from the CHP Air 21 helicopter that responded in conjunction with SPD ground units to a series of Shot Spotter activations that we had in our north area. As the air unit arrived at the Shot Spotter reported location, they observed the shooter once again fire a gun out of that car. As you're going to see in this video in a moment, the air unit was then able to follow until our SPD ground units were able to locate the suspect and detain him safely. During that investigation, no other witnesses that could or would identify the suspect, vehicle, or shooter were located by officers and investigators. So if we could start that video real quick. So on the bottom left-hand screen, that, you can see the shots being fired right now, surrounded by that box, and another shot being fired right there. So the air unit was directed initially to that area by the initial Shot Spotter activation that came in. They arrived on scene very quickly as SPD officers were responding, and they happened to record that last series of shots. If it weren't for the Shot Spotter alert to that location and the subsequent response of the air unit, we possibly would have never had identified that shooter, let alone have the video evidence of him firing the gun. And we certainly would have not had detained that suspect less than 10 minutes after the initial shooting had occurred. The suspect was subsequently booked for the shooting, possessing a loaded firearm, and child endangerment as he had a four-year-old in the car, as you can see, being carried out by an officer right there at the time of the shooting. That's good for the video. So there's a few highlights I want to talk about in the Shot Spotter system. The first is that Shot Spotter is one piece of our violent crime strategy. This technology piece is in addition to all of the other technologies and strategies that we use. We use community-based organizations. We use the Real-Time Crime Center. We use Shot Spotter. We use our violent crime reduction teams. We use a tapestry of different strategies to apply to violent crime in order to have the outcome, which we've been fortunate to have, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But Shot Spotter by itself is critical to lifesaving emergency response. Right now, over 80% of our gunfire incidents, and this is over the life that Shot Spotter has been with us, 80% of those incidents go unreported by our residents, meaning 80% of the time, without that alert, we would not have police officers or emergency medical being able to respond to those areas otherwise. We know that violent crime disproportionately affects communities of color. In 2024, 77% of shooting victims in Sacramento were either black or Hispanic. Our Shot Spotter zones are located in historically impacted areas and home to some of our most underserved populations. Removing this tool would disproportionately harm the very communities that are most at risk, undermining our equitable public safety. Shot Spotter helps us avoid overpolicing while targeting actual crime. Traditionally in policing, if we had a spike in crime, we would oversaturate that neighborhood with lots and lots of patrol officers and lots and lots of police cars, and we would just start stopping people for minor violations. But that type of high-impact policing has a toll on the trust in the community and the community that we serve. This tool basically allows for precision-based responses to a latitude, a longitude, to a place where we know a shooting just occurred within 60 seconds in our neighborhoods. That precision policing is best practice in our industry. It really has demonstrated quite a bit of success for, you know, throughout the United States, but right here in Sacramento, our own stats have shown a 45% drop from 2021 to 2024 within our Shot Spotter zones. We went in those zones from 989 alerts in 2021, and we're down to 527 in 2024. But Shot Spotter alerts alone is not the metric. The metric are how many less people are being shot. And I am proud to say that we have had year-over-year reductions every single year, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, in firearm assaults. Probably most importantly is this tool helps us promote public safety equity and promotes public trust. We know that eliminating Shot Spotter will leave potentially hundreds of gunfire incidents basically unresponded to. This can amplify a perception of abandonment in some of our most challenged neighborhoods and areas where people are challenged to call police in the first place. And since they know the system is up and running, they use it as a silent safeguard, knowing that we will show up. Discontinuing gunshot detection would mean leaving communities already burdened by violence even more exposed and dismantling a proven method of precise accountable policing. I think that we can all agree that if someone fires a gun in front of our own house, regardless if we feel comfortable calling the police or not, that we want a police officer to show up, respond quickly, ensure that no one is hurt if they are administered aid, and hold accountable the person responsible for such a reckless and dangerous behavior. With that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. We're going to take public comment first, and then we'll do council comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have one speaker, Keon Bliss.
Members of City Council, my name is Keon Bliss. I'm the former chair of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, and I'm urging you to vote no on renewing this Shot Spotter contract. It already expired in June, and ending it today would actually immediately save Sacramento taxpayers more than $500,000 a year. And if you renew this, it will lock us into wasting $2.6 million through 2030 on a tool that doesn't work to prevent gun violence and doesn't even reduce gun violence. In fact, there are studies that show that it actually increases police response time, not reduce them. Shot Spotter is costly, ineffective, and dangerous. In Chicago, 89% of alerts led to nowhere. In St. Louis, only 1 in 300 alerts found evidence of gun violence. And here in Sacramento, 73% of these alerts produced no reports from the police. And what do we get for these millions of dollars we've wasted already? A system that overwhelms dispatch with false alerts, delays 911 responses, and diverts officers from real emergencies. Other cities have already seen the evidence and walked away: Atlanta, Portland, Charlotte, San Antonio, Chicago. Even law enforcement leaders call Shot Spotter a gimmick and an utter failure. Worse, it's not just wasteful, it's harmful. Shot Spotter has been linked to wrongful arrests, deadly police encounters, and increased surveillance of black and brown communities, which the captain or deputy chief just described. Meanwhile, our city faces a third year of budget deficits. Every dollar spent on Shot Spotter is a dollar not spent on violence interrupters, housing, or mental health crisis response, the solutions we know actually keep communities safe. Sacramento deserves safety, not gimmicks. Sacramento deserves justice, not waste, and we most certainly deserve investments in people, not microphones on a pole. All you have to do tonight is simple: vote no, let the contract expire, and you instantly save $500,000 a year for Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Vice Mayor, we have no more speakers. Thank you so much. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And I just have a couple quick questions. First of all, I just want to say thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to our mayor and our interim city manager making sure, state clerk, for making sure this is on the discussion calendar. I know that I've had some questions as I've, you know, read over the documents and having the opportunity to learn a little bit more. Actually tasked my, my staff with putting together our own analysis based on, you know, what we've read on the internet, what different reports that have come out, and we have about 40 pages. I'm not going to bore you guys with this, but it's been really helpful for me to understand. So I'm going to start out with, my first question is around the amount of money that we have going towards this. So the vast majority of the money, the $491, almost $492,000, comes from that JAG grant. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on, it's year-over-year. Yes, that's how much is in the JAG fund currently, excuse me, but that's allocated annually. So as it goes on, that, that, that amount fluctuates based on the federal government. The last year, I think they allocated nationally 499 million nationally, and then we, we have a portion of those JAG funds.
And when we apply for JAG funds, do we say explicitly that we're using it for this purpose, or is it a source of money that the police department can use for a variety of different purposes?
It is, is fairly specific and narrow in what we can use it for. It is for fighting violent crime, but it specifically enumerates personnel and overtime, equipment and technology, travel and training, supplies and operating costs, all surrounding crime, and it also has a non-supplanting clause where we can't, you know, use it to make it so that where you don't have to use city funds to, or for our primary purpose.
Okay, that's really helpful because I see, I looked through a list of some other JAG uses in other cities. In El Paso, they use it for communications equipment like radios. In Las Vegas, they use it for tablets for patrol officers. And actually, in Tennessee, they use it for a comprehensive approach to violent crime statewide and not just in individual cities. I thought that was really interesting. So, so it can't be used for other things, but this is what we use it for historically.
Correct.
Okay.
Along with the MIOP, yes.
Okay, great. And then my next question around the funding is, so we have the MIOP and the grant. We, we're not calculating in the staff time for, for what this, so for example, if you get a verified activation that comes to you, then we obviously have someone on patrol who goes out and, and goes to that, spends time investigating that. Is that calculated in at all to what we're seeing in this number?
No, this, this, it's a great question. No is the answer. This is just strictly for the subscription to the service and the maintenance of the equipment that comes with that service, the alerts, access to the app, and all of the feedback loop that we do that. The, the, and I'm, if, if I can expand on that, we've evolved how we've responded to ShotSpotter over time since we've had it. So when we first deployed it, we had ShotSpotter units, officers that were dedicated to just the ShotSpotter calls. They weren't on 24 hours a day, but they were placed on shift when they were most likely to get the most activations, and we deployed them in different parts of the city. But with staffing constraints and best use, we have reallocated those officers back into patrol response, and in turn, we've then trained all of our patrol staff to respond to this call for service, just like any other call for service that they're trained to go to, like a domestic violence or a, you know, you know, a disturbance or whatnot. They know all of the investigative steps that they need to take in order to, you know, complete that call for service. That has made a much better and quicker response to all of those different ShotSpotter calls. So the staff time actually would be pretty difficult to, to calculate individually. I mean, we could, we could calculate how much time that one officer spent to go to that one call and investigate it, but this is just one piece of evidence. In these calls, that, that, that ShotSpotter activation may be linked three weeks from now to another ShotSpotter activation based on casings that were located there and entered into our NIBIN system and/or some other investigation where it comes out, oh yeah, I was at the scene of this shooting, or someone identifies someone at that shooting, where we link back two or three shootings to a single, single suspect. So it's hard to quantify, you know, that, that individual ShotSpotter activation into one piece of staff, staff time.
Okay, that's helpful. And that's actually is a good segue into some of the other questions I have, which is around, how often are we seeing that? So, you know, like, how often is an activation happening and it's leading to us finding some crucial piece of evidence, whether that be a firearm, casings in a case, whatever it may be, that's actually leading to hopefully eventually an arrest or some other outcome like that?
Yeah, I, I, it, it's difficult to quantify how many arrests are directly related, other than if an officer shows up at the scene, someone's holding the gun, or says, yeah, that's the person who fired the gun, and the investigation leads to enough probable cause to arrest that person right then and there. But what I would say is kind of what I referred to earlier is, this is one piece of technology that we're levering, leveraging in our wider violent crime reduction strategy. So our violent crime reduction teams, they review the ShotSpotter activations over the weekend. They are able to use investigative techniques in order to try and link particular people or known actors in, in our neighborhoods that would potentially be suspects of this back to that. Not to mention that we have all sorts of ongoing investigations in these areas that often are tied to those. And whether or not that individual activation is charged doesn't mean that we aren't able to prove that that person did, in fact, fire the gun at that location. Besides that, our, our only goal is not an arrest when we respond to an activation at ShotSpotter. Our goal is to make sure that no one is shot, that there aren't bullet holes in a house and someone is bleeding out inside of a house. Our goal is to, like, create safety in a space that was just very unsafe, where someone's, you know, firing a handgun in public.
Okay, that's really, and then how often have, has a ShotSpotter activation led to us finding someone bleeding, for example, in your, in your scenario?
Well, it, it depends because these are in, in zones. I don't have the, the specific numbers in front of me of, we don't keep a stat of how many times we show up and someone's bleeding, but.
Yeah.
But I, what I will say is, when someone is shot in one of these zones, whether it's an aggravated assault, a homicide, a negligent discharge, whatever the case is, those applicable charges happen, and it allows us, and we do have cases where we show up and there has been no call, and someone is bleeding on that call.
Okay, so, so it does happen.
Yes.
That's really helpful for me to understand, too, because what I'm trying to get at here in my own mind, as I've read through all of this, just, just to be transparent, is around, you know, whether the cost-benefit analysis of this, and whether or not what we're paying for, which I know in part is from a grant, that we could also maybe use for other purposes down the line, is actually worth it. And so I'm, I'm thinking about this in terms of, you know, how, how often are we seeing this result in something that would either lead to someone who's shot their weapon being arrested somewhat, or getting evidence for a case, or saving someone's life in the examples that you've brought up? And then another question I have is around the false positive rate. That's something that I've read about in other cities where they've, at least with this particular program, had those issues. Do we experience those issues here in Sacramento?
Yeah, let me address both of those things. First of all, on the, the cost-benefit analysis, this is a very common question, especially in, with public safety. I mean, with all public safety spending, whether we add more police officers, or we add more police cars, or we add a particular piece of equipment, it's hard to measure the worth of saving a life, or measure the worth of taking a handgun off of the street or out of the hands of someone who's already proven that they're willing to shoot somebody in public and preventing that next shooting. So that, that measure is very difficult for us. But I think that, in our opinion, we are using these dollars and leveraging these resources that we have the best way possible to make best use of this. And when we are able to use precise data, hey, a shooting just occurred here 60 seconds ago, and we're able to get an officer to that location versus, hey, go patrol around in this neighborhood, and maybe you'll be in an area when a shooting occurs or there, is really an excellent use of, of, of police dollars. To your second point, the accuracy of the ShotSpotter system, nationally, they have a 90% accuracy, accuracy rate. What we like specifically about sound thinking is it's just not a computer algorithm that is identifying that, which some of the other systems that we've looked at and have evaluated, it's just a computer algorithm. This has a human that verifies that hit, and as Captain Hanson mentioned, in the month of July, when we have fireworks going off like crazy and there's 3,000 bangs going on out there, they're able to discern those out all the way down to the rate of, we only responded to 54 of those. So in our opinion, it's, it's highly accurate.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm just going to have a couple more comments, but I'm done with my questions. I appreciate it.
Yep.
So, you know, as I mentioned, we put together this report that basically analyzed some of the research that's out there on this program nationwide, as well as news articles, what other cities have done. And so I just want to point out a couple of things that I've just noticed in, in the work, in the research that I did, which is, you know, that while it is, you know, maybe 90% accurate in terms of identifying a gunshot versus something else, it also, 90% of those alerts don't actually produce actionable results, as is defined by a lot of the research out there, which means, are we arresting someone? Are we getting a weapon? Are we getting some other kind of thing that's going to help us in, in our investigation? In fact, you know, a lot of other cities have gotten rid of this program because they found that what it did was waste a lot of time for officers. I'm not saying that that's the case here, because I would need more information on Sacramento-specific data, but that's what other cities have experienced. And so this was mentioned earlier, but we have, I can list off the cities that have recently, in the last few years, gotten rid of it. So that's New Orleans, Louisiana in 2013, Charlotte, North Carolina in 2016, Trenton, New Jersey in 2016, San Antonio, Texas in 2017, Troy, New York in 2017, Fall River, Massachusetts in 2019, Canton, Ohio in 2020, Atlanta, Georgia, 2018, Dayton, Ohio, 2022, Durham, North Carolina, 2023, Portland, Oregon, 2023, Seattle, Washington, 2023, Chicago and Houston, both in 2024, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, 2025, and Little Rock, most recently. And in almost every single one of those cases, as I went and actually went back and watched some of their city council meetings, read their, their staff reports on this, they all noted essentially that they did not feel like that they were, for lack of a better term, bang for their buck. They didn't feel as though the programming was actually leading to a reduce, a reduction in gun violence. They didn't feel as though it was leading to them being able to solve cases better. In fact, many of them cited that, that it was taking up a ton of staff time from the police department, and they actually opted for other violence prevention strategies instead of using ShotSpotter. So, you know, these are, I can share these studies with everybody, of course, I'm happy to share with them. And so when I look over the totality of what we've spent as a city since 2015, we're looking at over $4 million, and it's really unclear to me whether or not we've seen that direct benefit financially. And so I'm, I'm very skeptical about whether or not this is a good use of funds, in my opinion. I don't, I don't want to substitute my judgment for, for those on the, on the street who are doing the work, but it's really hard for me to look at the data that we do have and make, make the judgment that we are, that this is a good use of funds based on just the data that we have in front of us. And so, you know, I am happy to share this with everyone because I don't want to belabor this. I know it's been a really long day, but I, I'm personally going to be voting no on this today. I, I'm not convinced of, of the accuracy and effectiveness of this program, and I'd like to see, hopefully, us being able to use some of this funding for other violence prevention strategies in the future.
Thank you. We have three more council members, and I appreciate your line of questioning, Councilmember Maple, but there, there's one follow-up question to your, to your final comments. I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Bales to, to maybe address is, I, I did hear earlier and from the public comment that there was some departments that opted out of this, and you're not here to talk, we're Sacramento, they're San Antonio and other cities, but if you could maybe characterize why, why you think that they left and why we feel comfortable staying, if you could do so, please.
Sure. I wouldn't propose to offer why they left.
Yep.
But I would say that ShotSpotter is not like any other tool in public safety or any industry. It's how you use the tool or the data. And here in Sacramento, in conjunction with our violent crime strategy, like, that I mentioned, that is a diverse set, we believe that ShotSpotter is a, a crucial piece of that, and we, our data is that we have year-over-year violent crime reduction, firearm reduction in people shot. And really, that's what we care about. And so in, in best use of our dollars, we're seeing a positive result from the use of these dollars, along with our, all of our other strategies that we are employing. So I do know that there's several cities, including large cities like Oakland and San Francisco, that, right here in our own backyard, that are staying with ShotSpotter and that do find it a valuable tool. But it's difficult to know across the nation how they employ it, if they, how they respond to it, and if they use it as a, as a piece of evidence and as a diverse approach to violence reduction versus relying on it to solve their violent crime problem.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vane.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to take this time to thank Captain Ethan and Captain Bales for your presentation. I, actually, Councilwoman Maple asked a lot of my questions. I do have just one or two questions and mailing some, some comments. I think the first piece is, I really want to center our Sacramento Police Review Commission. I know that year after year, our Sacramento Police Review Commission has recommended that the city terminates its contract. They made that request in 2022 and then 2023, and I believe the last time this council had a conversation about this pilot group program was actually in 2003, because I went back to look at the city council conversation around the budget to fund ShotSpotter through grant funding, the JAG grant, I believe, and a little bit of the MIOP as well. And I just, you know, wanted, I'm glad that this item is coming to the full council. I know that it's already set to expire. I think one question I just had for city staff was, in the report, it was noted from 2020 to 2024 that you had 4,000, over 4,000 ShotSpotter activation, 607 activation with a citizen call. What is the accuracy rate for Sacramento of the 4,136? Are all of those actual gunshots?
They're gunfire incidents, and I think we are on par with the national average. So it, there are times where in that 10%, the, the 10%, there can be issues like if a gunshot is fired, say, from inside of a car. It matters if the arm or the firearm is inside of the window, outside of the window, if it's muffled by a physical barrier of some sort. That can, that, in that 10% is the, where the algorithm has a difficult time, but those give us possibles, and officers are able to go to that area and still ensure that no one is shot, that someone is, is not fleeing from the scene of a shooting at those times. So our, I believe ours are about on par. What we do have is a feedback loop with the ShotSpotter team, and if officers arrive and they determine, oh no, no shot, shots were fired, they show up and kids were lighting off fireworks, and they talk to the neighbors, and the neighbors say, oh yeah, for sure, there was nobody shooting, kids were lighting off fireworks. What our team does is we then get into the ShotSpotter program, and we enter that, hey, this, this particular detection was not shots fired, this is what, and some notes about what it is, and I, they use that data to further refine their product so that it gets more accurate over time.
Okay, so a quick question on that. So of the 4,000, the 4,000, those are actually confirmed gunshots? I guess that's my question.
They're gunfire incidents that are reported to us. Out of that, I don't know the, the exact number of the, whether it was 90% or 95%.
Okay. But the 4,000 is confirmed fire incident?
It's, it's incidents where ShotSpotters called us and say, hey, someone fired a gun there.
Okay. And it was verified that it was an actual gun? The 4,000, that's my question.
My, I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand. Those are, those 4,000 are times ShotSpotter has had, would they have an alert? Out of those, out of those, there's a 90% aver, 90% national average of accuracy. I don't have in front of me our local statistics of, of what were, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I'm, I'm also curious, outside of the 4,000, because the 4,000 is verify gunshots, right? Actual fire? Were there numbers reported to ShotSpotters outside of the 4,000? For example, like if there's a detection like fireworks or whatnot?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, like Captain Hanson said, I think I'm, I think I'm understanding your question, like, do they detect sounds that are not, that they determine are not gunshots all the time? And by a great majority, because the, like in July, like I mentioned, when they have 3,000-plus, you know, shots, you know, or, or bangs being heard, the algorithm and the human verification distills that down to, oh, we believe that only 54 of those incidents are actual gunshots, and when they do that, within 60 seconds, they are contacting our dispatch and alerting on the officer's app, and they're, we're getting officers to those, those scenes.
And following up to confirm if they are?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned that there's been a decrease. I think your number was 998 to 500. Was it 500 shootings? We've seen a decrease?
So what, what I meant, are you talking about the firearm assaults?
Hmm.
Yes. So in 2021, we had 902. Yes. So in 2021, we had 902 individuals shot in our city. In 2022, we had 828. In 2023, that reduced down to 659. And in 2024, we're down to 562. Well, that's still too many. That, that, that trend is ongoing, and we are continuing to make efforts.
Yeah. And Captain Bales, would you, would you say, I guess I'm going to ask you, would you say that has to do with ShotSpotter? Because just as you said, and I know Chief has said this too, that when we think about reducing gun violence, it's a holistic approach. And I know that crime overall in the city and in this country has actually gone down. And so like the correlation of like, because we have ShotSpotter is the reason why, you know, our gun violence has gone down. I mean, someone can also argue, you know, we don't have ShotSpotter, right, for example, and that crime overall has still gone down. And so I'm just trying to also have a better understanding of that correlation.
Yeah, it's difficult to, in any public safety effort, whether we put 50 more police officers on the street, or we add a new piece of equipment, or we employ an additional community-based organization to be in an area, we do not believe that there is any one thing individually that does it. In order to have a positive outcome, and I, I believe that we have struck an amazing balance with a diversity of strategies to achieve this outcome, I'm very proud that our department has continued this trend. We have literally cut in half almost the amount of people who are being shot in our city over the last three years. I think that's quite an accomplishment, and it really takes all of the tools at our disposal and best use of, of our dollars in order to accomplish that.
Okay, thank you for that. We're definitely in agreement that I think it's a holistic approach, and it's not just one thing. Another question I had was, Councilwoman Maple had mentioned in terms of the grant, I know that you submitted data, the SACPD submits data annually actually to apply for that grant in particular. If you didn't use it for ShotSpotter, what other programs or activities would you use it for?
Yeah, I, so the, the JAG funding obviously can be used in, inside of that area, those areas that I, that I mentioned. The MYOP would have to be, you know, determined by council to be, to be reallocated. But as far as a different tool or strategy that would achieve the outcome of putting an officer accurately to the location where a shooting had just occurred within 60 seconds, I know no other tool that can intervene in public safety in that way.
Okay, thank you. The last question I had was, has PD had a conversation with our police commission, given that this was an, one of their several recommendations over a year to terminate this contract? Have you all had a conversation with the police commission, the police commissioners?
I'm not aware of any recent conversations that have been initiated by the, by the commission. We'd be more than happy to discuss it with them if it was a, still an item of concern for them.
Yeah. Thank you, Captain Bales, appreciate that. So I just, thank you so much for answering those questions. So, you know, I just want to go back and center our police commission. I also got several emails from commissioners, and my commissioner in particular urging us to end this contract. I just want to share that our police commission, commissioners that we all appointed in 2022 and 2023, if you were here, did recommend us to terminate this contract. And I lean heavily on my commissioners because they do their due diligence, they work in the community. And I just want to share some of their analysis, and I think that's really important. And so I know that in the 2022 and 2023 recommendation, they noted that over 73% of ShotSpotter alerts resulted in no reports from 2015 to 2022. A lot of this data, I actually followed up with them, was actually gathered through the numbers that PD submitted for the federal grant, in particular from 2016 to 2022. It also noted in the commission report that, that ShotSpotter only really resulted in 4% of arrests from 2015 to 2022, and that a lot of these numbers, again, like I shared with you, were provided, these numbers are actually provided by PD. I just, you know, want to share with my colleagues that, you know, there are so many cities across this country that have already terminated their contracts because they found that the technology, you know, really wasted police resources. In Houston in particular, you know, only 5% of ShotSpotter alerts led to arrests, and that 80% of all their actually ShotSpotter alerts didn't result in crime. In Boston, they did an audit and found that 70% of ShotSpotters alerts actually resulted in no evidence of gunfire, and that 16% of them were pretty much vehicle backfire or construction. In Chicago, there was another study that let, that showed that there was 86% that, of ShotSpotter response that actually led to no report of crime. And then in St. Louis, another research showed that one in every 300 ShotSpotters also led, led responders to the scene with, with basically no, no gunshots. And then recently in New York, they found that only 13% of ShotSpotter alerts were related to actually confirmed shootings. I share this because, you know, this city in particular really prides ourselves in data. And so many of our Sacramento youth and families are really struggling in this moment. And it's so important for me that we use our limited resources, especially because we're facing a larger budget deficit next year, that we focus our dollars on methods that we know are actually effective and actually prevents gun shooting or crime, gun violence before it happens. I believe we should be, you know, prioritizing, investing in resources that actually prevent violence prevention and actually result in real public health solution. And so, you know, if we don't renew this contract, we're saving over $500,000, half a million a year, and we can redirect that money to more proven strategies to stop gun violence. And so respectfully, I'm going to be voting no on this item. And I, you know, urge my colleague that we let this expire and that we find other alternatives in terms of addressing gun violence. As, as I shared earlier with Captain Bales, you can't just point to one item is the reason why violent crime has been down. I think it's a holistic approach, and we should be looking at methods that are actually about preventing gun violence before it happens. And so those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for PD, a question for legal, comment to the chief, and then a few brief remarks. So I guess I can have PD come up first. Just to clarify, so when the gunshots happen, who clears the sound to make sure whether it's an actual gunshot or fireworks?
So the, the actual company, first of all, the algorithm clears it through, it detects and like runs it through its own filters. And then Sound Thinking has employees that then verify that on their end, not, not a city employee. And only after both of those two steps happen, do they then alert the police department to that.
So the 4,136 ShotSpotter activation, Sound Thinking is going through and verifying all those?
Those are, correct.
PD is not responding to 4,000 calls, running around like.
We, we're not running into, we're not running around to a much higher number than that. The, the 4,000 over the last few years are the ones that have met that criteria and that they, that they know that a shooting has occurred.
Okay, sounds good. So just confirming, PD is not, you know, and I know I stopped the, the presentation for this, but I think that there's a common understanding in the community that police is responding to all these activations. And I'm like, no, Sound Thinking, the company that we're hiring, is the one going through.
By over 90%, we are responding to a place where a gun was just fired in public.
Okay, thank you so much. And a question for legal?
Welcome. Thank you so much. And I know we postponed this from a few weeks ago because of the contract and because of some of the concerns that we were getting from the community. And it's a five-year extension. So if we at any point here on the city council want to opt out of the contract and say, hey, we don't want to work with this company anymore, can we do that?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Yes, these types of contracts are actually quite complex sometimes, and in fact, they're not known. These types of companies are known, not known to negotiate things such as termination clauses. Fortunately, after doing a lot of work, we were able to negotiate a very strong and favorable termination clause for the city, which has two components. Number one, it can be terminated, the contract, without cause, just upon a 30 days' notice. So that's very favorable to the city. Secondly, it has a, a prorated refund. And we even included a mathematical formula within the contract. That way, there is no ambiguity, and to avoid any litigation as to how that is calculated and all that. So, you know, we were actually quite surprised that they accepted our terms because they're quite favorable to the city. And so that's the legal work that went into, along with, you know, police department, to, to make sure that we negotiated a favorable term for the city.
Okay, thank you so much. And yeah, that's important to me, just because there is concerns out in the community. And I did have my briefing with the police department in regards to what happened in a lot of those other cities. And, you know, it's not our role to say, hey, this is why they left it. And, you know, I did my own research too. And so just having the ability to say, hey, we don't want to work with the company anymore, I think is really important to me. So then my recommendation to the chief and to, you know, everyone here, is just to come back with additional data every single year with a report back on the number of active, you know, the number of calls that we got, and how many were verified, and to continue monitoring this, just because I don't want to, it's a five-year contract, so I don't want to see it in five years from now. I need to make sure that we keep our eyes on it. So I will be supporting this item. I do have a few neighborhoods where we have a lot of gun, gunshots, multiple casings found in, early in the morning. And families are scared to report the gunshots out of fear of retaliation. And the only reason why we know that incidents happen there is because of these systems that we have in place. And I do see it as a tool in our toolbox to help, you know, with the detection and with gun violence prevention, and making sure that the community knows, like, hey, the police department may be there, even though we're not physically there. And so with that being said, I will move this item.
Thank you. A motion to second. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, actually.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilmember Talamontes was going down a very much-aligned path from, from my line of, of thinking, particularly with respect to the termination clause. So I appreciate, appreciate her asking that, that question. And I, I have one other question related to this ShotSpotter activations themselves. But I also have, I want to go just a slightly, a slight detour here. And is there an opportunity with this technology and what it reports and how the screeners are able to ferret out gunshots from other noises to identify fireworks?
There is not. This technology is solely focused on gunshot technology and trying to dispatch officers as soon as possible to a location where a firearm was just used.
Well, that's too bad, because in the part of the city that I represent, there is a scourge of illegal fireworks, not just around July 4th, on a pretty much continuing basis. If we could, if we could interdict that in an effective way. And frankly, we're working with code enforcement, using technology, drones, et cetera, to, to be more effective and efficient in that regard. But if we had other tools such as, such as this, since they're deployed anyway, it would, it would certainly, I think, be potentially very beneficial. Coming back, coming back to the, the action that the ShotSpotter can actually undertake, I'm, I'm maybe asking a question that's been asked, but in a, in a different way. I'm curious, and if you answer this, I apologize, I didn't hear it. I'm curious in, in how many, in what percentage of instances, if you can, if you can say, where you get an activation call and an officer responds, is some element of physical or testamentary evidence recovered as a result of, of that deployment of the officer to the location?
Yeah, I'm glad for the chance to clarify this. One, I don't have that percentage in front of me, but I think it's important to illustrate the circumstances in which officers do respond. When officers respond to a ShotSpotter activation, the absence of a bullet hole or a casing on the ground does not, does not completely discount the fact that a firearm was just used. A revolver does not, does not, you know, kick out a casing or any sort of evidence in that. And if someone is firing that into the air, or into the tree, or a ground, or something where an officer is not readily apparent, you know, a quarter-inch hole is not immediately apparent to the officer, they may not be able to find evidence of that shooting. We also have lots and lots of cases where criminals are savvy enough to pick up casings after they, they fire a gun, removing that evidence from the scene prior to officers getting there. They also sell equipment, catch, catches for, for the casings as well, which also helps them prevent evidence from going onto the ground. So when we talk about verified shootings, we're talking about the, the chance that officers are going to find evidence that's left behind, or there's a person who shot, or a piece of property that's shot. That doesn't mean there wasn't a verified shooting. So the, the statistic of a verified shooting would probably be misleading, since it's, it wouldn't be not verified that a shooting did not occur. A lot of times, we will go to those types of calls, and neighbors will say, oh, yeah, a gun was fired out here, and officers aren't able to find any specific evidence of, physical evidence of that at the time. So those, that verified piece is, is difficult to measure. Regardless, though, neighbors are happy that we show up and knock on their door and say, is everybody, is everybody okay? Because a gun was just shot.
Yeah, I'm just, so do you have a, a sense of this? And how many, more than half the time, is there some, some either physical or testamentary evidence that, that is accrued as a result of, of an officer being sent to the location?
Yeah, I, I don't have that, that in front of me, nor do we track it in that manner. It's something we could potentially track if we had somebody, you know, give us a statement that, yes, that was, that was a gunshot, in my opinion. If there was a bullet hole, if there's any, if there's any evidence that's located, that's documented in a report. So we collect the evidence, a report is written. If there's someone who says they, they heard a shooting, that's documented on the call normally. So there are, we do document and track that, but as a metric of, of what we call a verified shooting or not, that's not really a metric that we use. And just to illustrate further, what might not be a verified shooting that's being used in this vernacular right now of, of they show up and find evidence, investigators three weeks or two months from now could be in the middle of a separate investigation where someone says, oh, yeah, actually, I was in a car with someone else, and we were at this location around this time, and we did fire a gun. Well, now we have a piece of evidence that helps corroborate that shooting, that negligent discharge, regardless of the fact that at the moment, officers were at, at the scene, did not find a casing, or they did not find anything that was shot. So being able to then track that back to, yes, a crime occurred, yes, there was a negligent discharge and/or a bullet hole that was found days later, it'd be difficult to quantify that, but we find it to be a very valuable tool, both investigatively and for preservation of life.
Well, I do think it, it would be beneficial to, to think about what additional data just along the lines we've been talking about in the last couple of minutes, we, we might record in, in order to continue to assess the, the value of, of this particular program. And as Councilmember, Vice Mayor, excuse me, Talamontes suggested, I do think at least an annual review does make sense. And I, if and when there's a motion, or there was a motion made, and you incorporated that, did you not?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that's a, that makes a lot of sense. And I think we all, whether we support this or not tonight, we all will be looking for additional validation of, of this. For my, for my own part, I represent a part of the city that suffers from perhaps more gun violence than any part of the city. And I certainly see the value of a variety of approaches to reducing gun, gun violence. In fact, and there are some I think we, we should also be investing more in, which obviously is a challenge in the, in the current budget environment. But safety for all, especially safety from gun violence, has got to be a foundational value for us, I think, in, in our community. And in that light, in looking at this, while I, I do think there are very legitimate questions that, that have been raised, I subscribe to an all-the-above strategy. We have to use all the tools that, that we think reasonably are going to help us reduce gun violence. And I've come to the conclusion that at this moment, I think this, this is still. that, at this moment, I think this this is still a tool that makes sense to continue. But I also think that it's one that deserves regular and frequent review to see if it continues to to make sense, to invest money, and recognizing that the chunk of this is grant is grant money, federal money, or whether there are other applications that could help us even more, both within the department and beyond, in reducing gun violence, because that is the point. It's reducing gun violence. How do we manage to do that in the most efficacious manner possible? Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be quick. I just want to know, if we were to vote not to have ShotSpotter, what what possibly would you use to replace ShotSpotter with? What what tool would you use to replace the ShotSpotter and the impact that it's had to the organization?
Thank you for your question. There isn't a tool that we could use to replace it that meets the standards of the police department and fits within our violent crime strategy. Our violent crime strategy is working. I it the ShotSpotter is one piece of that violent crime strategy. I would hate to move away from something that we are seeing work to reduce gun violence. But like I mentioned earlier, there is no tool that's out there that we believe meets our standards and can accurately put a police officer at the scene of a shooting within 60 seconds of, you know, alerting us within 60 seconds, and getting an officer to either help help somebody who's been shot, or bring someone to justice that's shooting a gun.
So even with all the cities that have made a decision to go away from ShotSpotter, I'm hearing City of Sacramento is saying this is a vital tool in our toolbox in order to be able to prevent crime and gun violence?
You are correct. And we're not the only city, like I mentioned, both San Francisco and Oakland, that also have significant violent crime challenges, are using it and using it successfully, along with a whole host of other West Coast cities. Like I said, it's not the tool, it's how the police department employs that tool effectively to prevent all of the, you know, negative things that can happen with any public safety tool.
So we have better response, we have better information. I'm hearing that we need to do a better job of keeping statistics. Statistics like when you go to where a ShotSpotter has identified that you should go, and you go there and the person has been shot, but you were able to get an ambulance there to be able to save their life because you got there as quickly as you did. Just things like that, that really justify it beyond just the cost, because it's saving lives.
Absolutely.
So I'll be supporting this tonight. I understand that there are a lot of concerns about the dollars, and whether it's the best strategy and everything like that. But I don't hear a replacement strategy. I'm hearing that it's something that you support within the police department, and you feel it's within your tools, in order to be able to get the job done that you want to get done for the City of Sacramento. It's going to keep all of us safer. When in fact, there is a shot fired, there is a response out there much quicker than we could do on our own without ShotSpotter ShotSpotter. So therefore, I'm going to be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garrett.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've grown up with seeing in too many incidents, people firing firearms, you know, not only carelessly using them, carelessly. Still, many of them don't, many folks don't lock their firearms, and they've got kids in the house. And and I think it's important that the city send a message that if you're going to use firearms illegally here, that that they know that we're going to, that the city's going to respond quickly. To that point, I mean, I remember questioning in 2015, I think Councilmember Jennings and I are the only ones here when we first started ShotSpotter. It was a new technology. Any new technology, one, it's we're going to learn from it. And I think I think we have. And I think it's fair to say that there's been ups and downs on it. And the City of Sacramento has figured out better how to use it. Second, when it's new technology, it usually isn't, you know, at a cheaper rate, which goes to my question here. You know, the the my concern, I think, is is how the city itself look at at changing the market here. And I worry about a five-year contract. So this, so let me first start asking about this, because if new technology was to come into place that was cheaper and better and faster, you know, I'm glad I, you know, I appreciate the time on the termination clause. But how can we start looking at at that aspect? So that's that's my concern with the five-year contract. So talk to me about why the five-year contract, and why the negotiation on the contract.
Sure. First of all, if there is that technology, yes, please. It doesn't exist currently. And we know that because we do a comprehensive look at all of the best technologies that are out there. And we confer with our colleagues throughout the major cities in the United States on a myriad of things, but including software technology, gunshot detection, and things like that. Our research and development group in our training division is tasked with doing most of our research for best practice and for emerging technologies. But every time that we renew a contract, we are looking to spend our finite dollars very wisely. The five-year contract, I'm glad you asked, we are trying to lock in a price. Software, and probably all of you have seen this, goes up in price every single year. And so with this, we get the best of both worlds. We're able to lock in the 2025 price all the way through 2030. And if we don't like this in 2027, or there's the city's financial situation, or the federal grant situation, any of that landscape changes, thanks to the city attorney and Captain Hanson, we can opt out of that contract. And if there's a better technology, we can opt out of that contract. That is one of the things that was very important for us, was the no-cause termination, so that if and when there is something that we believe that would meet our rigorous standard, and be able to deliver us to 80% of gunshots that are occurring in our city with no no other way of detecting that gunshot, we would absolutely take that opportunity.
So was there ever a, you know, maybe maybe it's a fool's errand, but was there an ever ever a an attempt to do like a national RFP for a different device or different contract? I guess what I'm getting is, how do how do we create more competition in the market so you don't have essentially one monopoly on on a technology?
Yeah, I don't know how we create competition, other than constantly asking for more from all of our vendors in all of the different tools that we ask.
But was there a discussion about an RFP or a national RFP?
We we looked at other vendors. But the problem is, other vendors do not have things like human verification, which is very important to us, to reduce that, to reduce the inaccuracy and make sure that we are responding to actual gunshots being fired. The other systems are either too new or unproven, or do not provide the same service as the current mark, you know, the current product does. Whether or not there's a, you know, a company out there that is able to take that over, we've seen throughout, you know, at least in my career, going from in-car cameras that are VCRs to that is dominated by Panasonic, to going to other vendors, Motorola for radios. There's all these different vendors that are out there, but they're constantly competing for market share. And so when we interact with all of our vendors, we have a lot of asks. And we leverage different capabilities from different vendors against each other. Like, hey, this vendor offers this particular feature, we would really like that feature, and we'd like to not pay more for it, or we'd like to stay with your company to do it. So I think that's probably the best way that we spur innovation in the market, is continuing to engage with our vendors about what makes the best product for officers on the street at the time.
Well, thank you. Well, I appreciate that. Look, again, it's evolved a lot, I think, 10 years of experience with this department on the on the has probably made it more effective, where you get to be much more critical of other vendors. But I still, I still think that there needs, that there is something more that the city could do. And if Sacramento, Oakland, and San Francisco are using them, I mean, it seems to me that that's where, you know, with your counterparts, there should be a message being sent out there to the market saying, there's, you know, a willingness for this technology, and could they come up with something better and more at a at a cheaper price point? So the fact that it has, you know, kudos to your department and the city attorney's office for that, you know, that one-year termination clause. And thank you for taking the time to go through, you know, for your staff to go earlier with me through the contract and on this issue. But I but that, I think, we, the city cannot be held in contracts, long-term contracts, that that later on, future councils have to figure out how to how to pay for those. And I think that that's my biggest concern here. This contract here has an ex clause, but I don't want to repeat to, for example, I won't bring up other past contracts from other councils that we have to still pay for. But but I but I'll say that I'm glad that the department is using it as a component of a tool, and that it is sending a message that if someone is using a firearm illegally, that we're going to take active action on it. And I do know people sometimes are afraid to report. They do, they are afraid to report. So having a tool, I think, is important. So thank you.
Okay, just a quick question of clarification for our motion, Vice Mayor. So what I heard in the motion was a yearly review, but I didn't hear any specifics. So I guess my I see the writing on the wall here. I don't think my vote's going to change the outcome here. And so I'm I could see myself supporting this motion if I if there's some specificity on what it is exactly that we're going to see in this review. And I think specifically, I'm interested in the information that's going to help us make better decisions on a year-to-year basis. So, for example, you know, tying it to arrests, to firearm recoveries, false positive rates, and then specifically looking at the differences in outcomes based on traditional 911 calls for 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 gunshots versus ShotSpotter, looking at the differences there, seeing if we see anything. And the last thing is just making sure that we have really clear performance benchmarks from from PD about what they what you all want to see in this technology. So is that something that either we can include in direction moving forward, or in the motion itself?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, Chief, can you please come up here? Yeah, I included in the recommendation to do an annual audit, you know, evaluation of this program, given all the research and some of the concerns from my council colleagues. So do you think one year from now, review this and make sure you put on your radar for it to come back to council?
Oh, absolutely. We actually currently publish statistics, you know, violent crime, as we presented in 2022, was our priority in trying to reduce gun violence. We have put an incredible amount of work into data collection and crime analysis. Obviously, for some of the reasons that were outlined by Deputy Chief Bales, some of these are more difficult. But we can certainly continue to provide those and share some of the metrics, because you're not, the questions that you're asking are very reasonable. When you're trying to look at where we're putting our dollars, and if they are, in fact, the most effective, you should know that we have those exact same questions. We have to stand here and explain and justify the need for this product. So we also have the same questions we ask a lot of our vendors, and I will be happy to come back with a comprehensive report. We will, and I do believe, you know, we should review this every year. And typically, we come back and we present where we are in violent crime and just crime in general, whether it's the budget.
Just to be clear, so what I'm asking about is data specific to the efficacy of ShotSpotter?
Yes.
Not just violent crime in general?
No, I understand. Yeah, absolutely. And I understand the change in the motion. So yes, absolutely.
Great, yeah.
And I'll be happy to publish it.
I'll say including, but not limited to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So with that, I'm, you know, I obviously I've shared my concerns, but I also believe in not letting perfect be the enemy of good. I really, you know, want to make sure that we see the data moving forward, and if and hopefully be convinced by that. I just didn't, I didn't see that today. But I'm happy, I'm going to support the motion today, just because I agree that we should start that review and have the data to make those decisions. Thank you.
Okay. And so I made the original motion. Councilmember Kaplan, you're okay with the amendments? Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Do we have that speaker, do you think so?
Yes, we had a motion by Councilmember Telemontes, or Vice Mayor Telemontes, and a second by Kaplan.
No, I mean the details, the revised.
Absolutely. Yeah, the direction was clear.
Okay, thank you. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions?
No.
One no. Thank you. Next item, please.
So, Mayor, we move to council comments, ideas, questions, AB 1, 2, 3 reports. And then I have three speakers for matters not on the agenda. I am not seeing anyone signed up to speak. Devin Strucker, Mary Tappel, then Zion Taddis.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Devin Strucker. As the Executive Director and a resident of the River District, I'm here today to voice our strong opposition to the city's plans to create a new facility for the unhoused in our neighborhood. The River District is already home to a high concentration of social services, transitional and affordable housing units, and 526 city and/or county-funded shelter beds in our 1.25 square mile district. In 1989, the City Council made a promise in the form of a resolution not to locate any more shelter beds or social services in the River District. In the 36 years since, the unhoused crisis has grown exponentially. In 2021, the City Council adopted a comprehensive siting plan that identified 20 priority sites, none of which were in the River District. However, that plan stalled. So in March of this year, the City Council voted to rescind that resolution to allow additional shelter beds in the River District. Our mayor and District 4 council member were absent for that vote. So the other seven council members, two of whom have zero shelter beds in their districts, essentially voted to once again use the River District to bear the brunt of our region's homelessness crisis. While the media is reporting that the new micro-community sites would only have 40 or fewer residents, at our social, at our security summit two weeks ago, we were told that our site would have up to 120 residents. That would bring us to 646 shelter beds, more than any council district, and in fact, more than districts 1, 3, 5, 7, and 8 combined. Our businesses are struggling, our residents are frustrated, and we will never fulfill the River District's economic potential if this plan comes to fruition. We already have done more than our fair share. It's time for the rest of the city to step up. I did submit a map for you all to see where the shelter beds funded by the city and county are located throughout the district. Thank you.
May I give you your comments, Mary Tappel?
Mayor McCarthy, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I first, I wanted to adjust what I was originally going to come up for was was the the operations by the utility department currently in Middle Arcade Creek. That is a section of the creek from Marysville Boulevard crossing to upstream to the Del Paso Boulevard crossing. And a vast amount of earth had been moved out. Iowa's adjacent property area has a natural park. My husband and I own a natural park. We've done a bunch of grant work. I don't know if there is the camera that, can you see? No, no. Well, anyway, this is this is that natural park from the front, but it connects directly to the creek. And we've had a lot of successful grant work down there. So I was feeling that we were losing some public value there. And so, but thanks to Councilman Dickinson, and the Department of Utilities Acting Director Cheryl Hune, and Adams Strebel, a North Area Supervisor Utilities District, we're working on it, see if we can come to some mutual agreement that's reasonable to go ahead. So I'm putting that aside. But I did want to make the point that this, to me, is not a vacant lot. I understand the bureaucracy that it has to be registered, as if it was a vacant lot instead of a very treat, a natural park. But it was not acceptable for the city to send around a notice, to just deliver a notice saying that that we needed to have everything cleared by down to one one foot height, all of the weedy material. And if we had any any comments we want to make about that, we would be heard in full if we could somehow transport ourselves back in time to 10 days earlier to be at a council meeting fully.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our final speaker is Zion Taddis.
So that was a reasonable.
Thank you for your, Zion is our final speaker this evening. Just one moment, please. Let me make sure your microphone's on.
So I'm here to complain about a commercial real estate builder building companies that I have leased two years ago for my cannabis business in my Chivas Cafe, a coffee shop. But apparently, when I leased the building, they didn't have the electrical the electrical, the fire, the basic necessary things that they were supposed to have before leasing the building. And then the city is making me accountable for the real estateers that, who owns the building, was supposed to not lease the commercial, which is common sense, without getting their electrical, then the plumbing, and the, uh, mechanical, and everything I had to do, spend all my money and my time, my energy, to get just certification of, uh, uh, occupancy, or capacity. And once I get that, they use the city to actually remove me without even me being there. So that type of systemic, uh, system needs to be accountable, and nobody is making them accountable. So they keep on leasing the building to somebody like me, underserved, underrepresented community. That's why we have 77% of, in our community deficiency, and instead of, uh, you know, working on the prevention, we work on the action, and nobody's being accountable. So I would, I'm trying to put the motion that this commercial building, before they list it to people like me, they need to have the certification of their capacity themselves for the building permit. So it's taken me two years because I had to, the city had to make me get all that done, which is unfair. So I'm just putting in a motion, so for you guys to really look at the building permits. And then I have a commercial right next to.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers this evening. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Yes, thank you, Queen Chiba.
Please take your seat, your, your time is complete.
Thank you, Queen Chiba.
So Mayor, we have no more. We have no more speakers and no more business to come before the council?
Okay, I have one adjournment. I would like to, um, adjourn in memory of Larry Ramirez. Larry, um, passed away suddenly at a local shelter, um, this past, um, this past month. He was a team member at Sacramento Navigation, one of our nonprofits we recently honored at our Sacramento nonprofit, uh, recognition day just a few weeks ago, and I, I met him that day, along with five of his, um, you know, team members with SAC Navigation. He was very proud of the work that he was doing. He over, overcame a lot, addiction, poverty, homelessness, and was, um, serving alongside his team members, trying to make a difference in his own life, as well as, um, team members, um, helping it, make a difference for people throughout Sacramento. So we want to adjourn, um, this council meeting in his memory, and express our deep condolences to Larry's family, his friends, and his loved ones, and again, honor, acknowledge his work in the City of Sacramento. Thank you. With that, we adjourned.